I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of April 16, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. Thank you. The first order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it's with great honor that I am the one chosen to do this proclamation. It is in regards to National Day of Prayer. Whereas National Day of Prayer is an annual event established by an act of Congress which encourages Americans to pray for the nation, its people, and its leaders; and whereas many observances are held across the country which concentrate on the need to pray for those in leadership at all levels of national, church, and educational areas of influence; and whereas days of prayer have been called for since 1775, when the Continental Congress designated a time for prayer in forming a new nation; and whereas in 1863 Abraham Lincoln called for such a day; and whereas officially Day of Prayer was established as an annual event by an act of Congress in 1952 and was signed into law by President Truman; and whereas the law was amended in 1988 and signed by President Ronald Reagan establishing the Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of May each year; and whereas the Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and every American may observe the day in his or hers own way; and whereas Protestants, Roman Catholic, and Jewish leaders are included in the Day of Prayer events celebrated in Washington DC and throughout the nation. Now therefore I -- now therefore Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize the second day of May 2019 as a Day of Prayer in the City of Santa Maria and encourages people of all faiths to participate in the Day of Prayer according to their own traditions. And here to receive this certificate is George Majeway from the National Day of Prayer Organization.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff of Santa Maria, and the wonderful people of the great American city of Santa Maria. What started 22 years ago here in Santa Maria, outside, right outside the patio right here, has now come into the largest presentation of the National Day of Prayer in the state of California. It's throughout all of the world, actually all of America, but in California we have the largest grouping. We expect about 800 people this year. We'll be filling up Park Plaza Pavilion to capacity, and we'll make sure that if we are at capacity so that the fire chief is not too concerned about having the people standing outside with speakers and stuff like that. We are really excited about this. We hope to see all of the City of Santa Maria present. We have a great team of leaders on the Board of Directors. Kathy Staples, for 21 years, was actively engaged with the National Day of Prayer, and she had to relocate down to Yorba Linda, and she will be here on May 2nd. And she doesn't know this, but we were recognizing her for her years of service. I have communicated with almost all of the leaders of the city and other departments, and we hope that you can join us. We've heard from several of you, but those who have not responded, we really would ask you to please join us for that day. It's truly an opportunity to celebrate. For those who are looking for a free lunch, our Noontime Kiwanis will be providing lunch, as they have done for 22 years, to the City of Santa Maria for all who show up. Hamburgers, fresh food, drinks, everything. And then we have -- the program is exactly one hour in length, and I'll make sure that we keep it to one hour in length. So thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Community of Prayer. We'd love to see all of you here at the Park Plaza Pavilion on May 2nd, from 11 for lunch, and then 12 o'clock the program until 1:00. I do have some things for you if you'd like to take and hand them out to all the city personnel. Instead of going big flyer, we now have little postcards, business cards, with all the information. And we have brochures that are in English and Spanish. And we have posters, that I know that Ed would like to have one in her office, in English and Spanish. So thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation is referred to as Committed Week. Whereas the City of Santa Maria community suffers numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse; and whereas Committed Week is a youth development campaign planned by youth and youth focusing on drug abuse prevention and education to promote healthy and drug-free lifestyles. And whereas it is the goal of the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, better known as CADA, Santa Barbara County Friday Night Live partnership, and Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley to involve families, schools, business, media, government, medical institutions, faith organizations, law enforcement agencies, and other youth organizations in all aspects of this campaign. This will foster an atmosphere that supports a healthy lifestyle for youth and educates and creates awareness of the harms of substance abuse. And whereas the committed campaign was established by CADA to encourage prevention efforts in our community to promote activities that keep youth drug-free. And whereas the month of April is California Friday Night Live Month and Alcohol Awareness Month, the town hall and events like Free for the Weekend is a way to showcase student efforts to curb the effects of drugs and alcohol in the community. Now therefore Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes April 22nd to the 26th, 2019, as Committed Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to support and participate in the alcohol and drug prevention activities. Witnessed heretofore and set the hand by Mayor Patino and the seal of the great City of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore on the 16th day of April 2019. And here to receive this is Britt Stanley and Sue Barazza?
Sarah.
Sarah Barazza.
Madam Mayor Patino, Councilmembers, thank you very much for distinguishing CADA with this honor, with this proclamation. We have a lot of work to do still. There's a lot of great agencies doing work here in this community. I did a little quick math before I came here today, and just this school year alone from the schools, we've had 100 and over 150 referrals for drug or alcohol issues. Eighty percent of those were junior higher elementary school. So there's a lot of work still to do, but thank you for this honor. We would love for you to join us at our third annual town hall meeting on May 8th at the Boys and Girls Club from 5:30 to 8:00. There'll be food, childcare available, hope to have some entertainment from the El Camino Ballet Vocalico. They do a great job every year. We're trying to get a young man who is a former gang member, drug user, who was in Juvenile Hall Boys Camp, to shoot a video for us. He's really turned his life around. His name's Adrian. From gang life to he is now in school to be a nurse practitioner at San Francisco State. So we're hoping he can get that video to us and show parents that kids can make a change. So we'd love for you to join us on May 8th at the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you very much.
What time is that, Britt?
5:30 to 8:00, Councilman Cordero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Moats will be making this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Month. Whereas Americans are served every single day by millions of public servants at the federal, state, county, city, and tribal government levels. These unsung civil servants do the work that keeps the government functioning and helps make this nation acceptable, exceptional. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths to put the public first; and whereas many public servants, including police officers, firefighters, and others, risk their lives every day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include accountants, clerks, analysts, engineers, planners, and librarians, attorneys, inspectors, and laborers, computer technicians, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes May 5th through 11th, 2019, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. And this will be accepted by city employees.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as the employees are receiving the recognition, I want to take the opportunity to recognize a cross-section of our employees who have the pleasure of serving this city, and we have a good group of them there. And just quickly, we want to highlight some of the work they do day in and day out to serve our community. We have payroll staff Tina Garcia, who not only makes sure all employees receive their bi-weekly paychecks, but they're also is -- she's also responsible for preparing the government compensation report. You have Alex Valdez in the city manager's office. She's coordinated the inaugural Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day in 2018, and we have the second event coming up next week. Commercial waste collection driver Max Maestas went above and beyond alerting residents to suspicious activity while collecting refuse during the early morning hours. Officer -- where'd she go? She left. Officer Tiffany Delaney there in the back is a key leader with our DUI enforcement. She's been recognized in her efforts with the MAD Award, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award. And then we have librarian two Selena Fiero, and she completed the Leadership Santa Maria Valley training and was asked to join the leadership board. Management analyst Katrina Garcia, not here tonight, but she's initiated monthly meetings with the management analysts citywide, educating them on HR and finance-related issues. We have Manuel Ariola in Fleet Operations and George Torres from the landfill. They are being recognized for working together to design and fabricate a modification to the blade of a bulldozer that we use daily, which is able to save us, reduce maintenance costs, and keep that expensive piece of equipment running well. We also recognize Fire Chief Leonard Champion, who's been working diligently to improve communication standards and training while maintaining a professional-level fire staff. We have City Ranger Corey Bryant. He's helped -- he helps keep our community safe by detaining adults. He had an example of detaining two adults at the Town Center's South Parking Structure for loitering, and they do a good job protecting that facility. And then Celia Lennon in code compliance, and then Building Inspector Alex Rodriguez were given kudos by residents who were impressed by their problem-solving skills and providing high customer service. So during this Public Service Recognition Week, we want to recognize the folks out here just serving the community day in and day out and the variety of work that they do. So thank you.
On behalf of all of us up here, thank you to all of our employees in the City of Santa Maria, because you make -- you're the ones that make us look good. You guys are the ones that make the city run. So thank you very much. I will be making this presentation, and this is Serve Santa Maria Day. Whereas Serve Santa Maria is dedicated to improving the quality of life through beautification projects that foster pride across neighborhoods, such as clean up public parks, sprucing up local schools, homes, and churches, removing graffiti and trash, and by planting shrubs and trees. Whereas Serve Santa Maria is now one of the community's largest all-volunteer service organizations with more than 900 devoted volunteers of all ages and abilities, registered to give their time, enthusiastic energy, and heart to the semi-annual Day of Service. Whereas Serve Santa Maria promotes the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding, and cooperation, personal growth, professional development, community service, and the opportunity to make new friends. And whereas the leaders of Serve Santa Maria are devoted and faithful servants of God whose collective actions are motivated by their vision to see the city and surrounding communities transform both in spiritual and positive social ways. And whereas by performing acts of kindness together, the volunteers experience and promote spiritual care and fellowship. And whereas, since its inception in April 2010, Serve Santa Maria continues to make a positive and collaborative impact on our community. Now therefore I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby announce and proclaim May 4th, 2019, as Serve Santa Maria Day in the City of Santa Maria, and hereby call upon all residents of Santa Maria to render support to the volunteer acts of service of this organization and to make themselves aware of Serve Santa Maria, whose leaders and volunteers will provide meaningful service to our homes, schools, businesses, churches, and community. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore the 16th day of April. And here to receive this is --
I'll help you.
Oh, Pastor Carl Nielsen. I was talking to you when I came out.
I almost was going to say Tim Ossinger.
I am deeply humbled by this today when I realized we've been doing this Serve Santa Maria for 10 years. It just seems like yesterday when I was meeting Alex Pasada, and he drove me out underneath the Santa Maria Bridge and asked, "Could we paint all of the graffiti over the graffiti?" And I said, "I don't know." I had checked with the churches in town. They said they wanted to help, but I have no idea how many people are coming. And he said, "Well, if you can even get halfway across, we'd be absolutely delighted." And that day, over 200 people showed up. It was the kickoff for Serve Santa Maria, and we completed the entire project in an hour and a half. And it started to dawn on me the power of many hands working together. And then I remember in the second year is when I met Attorney Phil, and they gave us a home that had been cited for years and nothing had ever happened. And he -- I got a message after that second Serve Santa Maria that I needed to come in and see the attorney, and I thought, "Uh-oh, what have we done? Maybe done something wrong?" And I sat there, and Phil spoke to me and said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. We've been citing that home for years, and in one day, your team of volunteers changed everything." And he did say to me, "If you want more, we have more." And those more have continued to come to us, and we have never declined an invitation. And so I have to say a lot of thank yous, because if you would have told me years ago that this idea that I had would turn into a nonprofit, I simply would have laughed at you. I never thought this could happen. But what I've learned is that God is full of surprises. And so we now have an amazing leadership team, and if I could have them all stand up, we gathered them here in the front row, please stand up. Could not -- we could not do this without these people. We just have very talented people on this team, and it's an amazing collaboration of volunteers in our city. I have pictures of you, Mayor Allison, Ed Waterfield, kneeling, planting plants in front of the Veterans Building a few years ago. Our city council members, our leaders in this community, I recognize many of you who have come out and led by example in our city. And so we are just so grateful for the support and participation from our leaders in the city. And we could not also do what we do without the businesses in our community. When I think now of all of the times that Bedford Enterprises and Hugh Bedford has given us these dumpsters, these roll-off dumpsters, and we roll them out in front of a project, and volunteers collect stuff, there's other words, but stuff will be sufficient, and it goes into these dumpsters, the city waives the fee at the landfill that day, and so everybody is winning. These residents, our city, and all of the volunteers who walk away with a full heart. And we could not do this, because the real heroes in all of this are our churches, our volunteers, where I think most of our volunteers come from. It's that combination of city, business, and faith community all coming together that have made this as incredible as it is. So I just say thank you to our leadership team who continues to work on these projects. We have a great slate of things. We have over 900 people on our email list now, so if you're not on it, just call my church at Bethel Lutheran, we'll add you. And May 4th, we're going to be doing Serve Santa Maria 17, and it's got a lot of these kind of crazy projects on it. You can read about it. I'm sure I see Rossi over there. He's going to interview me in a couple of weeks probably for another article. The Santa Maria Times, KSBY, these media people. I have never called them. They're on my email list, and they call me. It's absolutely amazing, the favor that we've had among our media. So really, I say I try to organize this, but it's more like trying to herd cats when we do Serve Santa Maria. I try to get these projects lined up. I try to get people connected, and somehow, some way, with God's grace, Pastor Tim, that you prayed about, these events happen. So thank you to all of the people in our city who have ever participated in this and made this the great city that we are. Thank you.
Well, Pastor Carl Nielsen, I would like to say thank you to you and your team. I remember, has it been that long ago you gave me that book to read?
Yes.
I still haven't finished it. I'm going to tell -- I'm going to tell you the truth. It was rather boring, but it was -- everything you told us that could happen in Santa Maria was in that book, so I don't have to read the book.
It was called Transforming Our City.
That's right.
And after a few events is when we invited the city council, many city leaders. At First Christian, we had the pastors in our community. We brought them all together and fed everybody for free because we had a vision of what could happen. And yeah, we've read that book, Transforming Our City, and it's happening. It really is happening. So if anybody else would like the book, we just purchased some more.
Mine is just like new. I can pass mine on.
But it's support, Mayor Alice, from our city leaders that helped make this happen. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. The final proclamation this evening will be presented by Councilmember Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is on Energy Solutions. Whereas California's energy policies are critical to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and reducing the impact of climate change on its residents; and whereas the state is increasingly proposing new legislation eliminating choices of energy by mandating technologies to power buildings and public and private fleets as a strategy to achieve the state's climate goals; and whereas clean, affordable, and reliable energy is crucial to the well-being of Santa Maria residents, particularly the most vulnerable who live on fixed incomes; and whereas the need for clean energy to attract and retain local businesses, create jobs, and spur economic development is vital to the city's success in a highly competitive regional and global marketplace; and whereas Santa Maria residents and businesses value local control and the right to choose the policies and investments that most affordably and efficiently enable them to comply with the state's requirements; and whereas the city understands that a diversity of energy delivery systems and resources contribute to greater reliability and community resilience; and whereas Santa Maria understands the need to mitigate the impacts of climate change and is committed to doing its part to help the state achieve its climate goals, but requires the flexibility to do so in a matter that best serves the needs of its residents and businesses. Now therefore Mayor Patino and the City of Santa Maria do hereby recognize that the City of Santa Maria supports balanced energy solutions that provide it with decision-making authority and resources needed to achieve the state's climate goals, and supports proposed state legislation that retains local control by allowing all technologies and energy resources that power buildings and fuel vehicles. And this proclamation will be accepted by Tim Mahoney of PG&E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and the city staff, and folks in the audience. Tim Mahoney with Southern California Gas Company. So good recognition here today. You know, as California is growing, Santa Maria Valley, the City of Santa Maria, we're going to be using more energy. And it's come to everyone's recognition that there really is not one solution. There is no one-size-fits-all. We need all the technologies we can get. On a day like today, when the wind's blowing, wind energy, great. When the sun's shining, great. I saw on your agenda that you're doing something with photovoltaics in the city. Thank you for doing that. That's what we need, new technologies constantly doing things. But in the big picture, as all this happens, the idea of balance, that natural gas can play a role. You go out into the rural areas, which I end up in quite a bit with my job traveling, and you see people using butane and propane. Well, those are also very good energy technologies. So it's going to take a lot of folks with a lot of good ideas, hydrogens on the way, new technologies to power buildings, homes, businesses, et cetera. So this is great to have, and it really provides a lot of encouragement to folks like me and the industry and my customers, and my customers are your residents, so we're all in this together, and it's much appreciated. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. The next item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the city council on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. And Madam Mayor, we have six.
Six, okay. Okay, and would you please set the timer for three minutes apiece? And with the speakers, please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Sarah McDonald, followed by Gina Cortez, followed by Gary Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, and invited guests. Tonight, I am representing the League of Women Voters as your observer tonight, and I'm excited to observe your meeting. And I remind everybody that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization, and I am so excited to be here tonight on their behalf.
Thank you. Gina Cortez, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Rudy Madrigal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Gina Cortez, was invited back to Santa Maria Valley, and today we're here to share a little bit about our agency. We're a nonprofit agency that works with youth and parents in our community. The way we work with parents and youths is we help keep them off the streets, keep them in schools, offering services. in schools, offering services and some programs. With April being Alcohol Awareness Month, one of the programs that we offer yearly that throughout the local high schools is called the Every 15 Minutes Program. This year, we have the honor of offering our program at Orchid Academy High School, and to share a little update as to how our program went, I brought two of our student advisors that helped me all along the way in planning this program for their school at Orchid Academy, so I'll pass it on to our advisors.
Good evening, my name is Alejandra Ramos, I am a senior at Orchid Academy High School, and from a student perspective and from the planning side of this program, I would like to mention that this was a very impactful program that opened the eyes of the students and the awareness of drinking and driving, and I would like to thank Fighting Back Santa Maria for the opportunity, because it really made an impact on the students.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Clayton Merrill, I was a student advisor for the Every 15 Minute Program at Orchid Academy. Every 15 Minutes is a very impactful program, I know many high schools in our area have done it, Santa Maria, Buena Vista High School, a whole bunch of big high schools have done it, and we are honored to do it this year, and I would say from a student perspective, it was very, very impactful. If you don't know the program, it's a two-day program, first day is a mock car crash, and the next day is a mock funeral. Both days, I think, were very impactful. I asked our school counselors to see, as soon as we were actually really touched by it, and they said day one, they had a couple of students come into them, they said day two, after the funeral, a lot more students came to them, so it's a very, very impactful program that teaches kids about driving under the influence and how it could really impact your lives. So thank you, guys.
So we'll continue to share updates about our programs and services that we offer, bringing our youth to share their perspectives as to the impact that we continue to make in the community. As we know that alcohol, underage drinking, and drug use, marijuana use continues to be very prevalent here in our community, we continue to offer services and programs in our community to the efforts to help reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Rudy Madrigal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Gary Hall, I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. My comments this evening are on behalf of the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Home Team, or NSBIT, which is an organization affiliated with the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. NSBIT promotes the general welfare of mobile and manufactured homeowners in North Santa Barbara County. NSBIT is pursuing the introduction and implementation of enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria. Since November of last year, a NSBIT representative has provided public comment at nine of these city council meetings. We continue to ask for action that will, one, correct the failure of the informal and voluntary model lease program of 1999, two, to end the excessive rent increases that have become routine over the last 19 years, three, to protect the manufactured homeowners from any future predatory manufactured home park owners, and four, help maintain affordable housing for seniors and low-income citizens who remain vulnerable to the rising cost of living here in Santa Maria. A third rent stabilization stakeholder meeting, including city representatives, park owners, and homeowners, is scheduled in two weeks. We, the homeowners, remain hopeful that the park owners are developing a response that recognizes the homeowner's needs. Little evidence of that has been demonstrated in previous meetings. We still believe that an appropriate balance can be established, affordability, and a fair return on investment can coexist, as has been demonstrated in jurisdictions all over our state. To date, the city has only seen the role of facilitator. Timely implementation of enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria remains possible only if the city is willing to become more proactive by putting it on the city council agenda. At the November 6, 2018 city council meeting, you, Madam Mayor, requested of city manager Stillwell that the issue be added to the agenda. We feel it's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rudy Madrigal, followed by Daniel Swanson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, I'm currently not prepared to make my public comment, I'd like to reserve it for another day, and so I'm just not prepared.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Swanson, followed by Ernest Armenta.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for letting me speak. By the way, let's take a deep breath of the great Santa Maria era. And by the way, I moved here in November, not November, but I moved here in 2013, and this is an ideal community after living in LA and Portland. I love Santa Maria. Now, the purpose that I'm here for is for rent stabilization, and the reasons that I would like to address this is that I'm on, I live in Rancho Buena Vista, and we had the mayor last night gracious with her presence, and she talked, and I asked her about getting this on the agenda, and she seemed favorable to it. Our lease runs out at the end of 2019, so if you run out the clock, we're going to be stuck with that lease. If we can get this thing on the agenda in May, then we have an opportunity, and I'm not saying that you need to support us at this point, but at least we can have an honest discussion about it, and we can talk about the pros and cons, and maybe whether it's just CPI, whether it's a hybrid, whatever the system is, at least it'll be brought to the forefront, and we'll have an honest shot at talking about it. And one of the other things that I really wanted to address was Gary, who's the president of our association, and is the president of the lease committee, not including last year, which is a 3.9% increase on inflation, he did a summary from November, December of 2009 to the present of what the inflation rate was and what the owner has increased their rent. And maybe you'll be shocked, maybe you won't. The inflation rate went up 11%. The owner's increase to the residence went up 30%, and it actually went up more than that, because when you sell your home, they get an additional 5%. Why? I don't know, they don't lose money, because if somebody doesn't pay, they put a lien on the home and they get paid anyway. So it went over 300% over what the cost of inflation is. And in our park, the one thing that stands out, sure, we have people in there that have additional sources of income, plus social security, plus we have a large group of people in there that are on social security, and as a real estate agent, I've listed a lot of homes in there and sold homes, and I can tell you, talking to a lot of these people, that they've had to tighten the belt, and tighten the belt as they keep on raising it 3% and 3%, where they get to the point where they have to move. Now, a number of them were in the position to move into their families or children, but a lot of them weren't. Where did they end up? Homelessness. And I know that's an issue that I heard the mayor talk about last time. I just want to get this, I see red, I guess that means end?
That means your time's up, Mr. Swanson, thank you.
I'd like this to be brought up where we can have a discussion, and hopefully you'll let us have it on the, sometime in May, where we can talk about this.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Ernest Armenta, city of Santa Maria. For you folks at home that are sitting there and trying to just make it day-to-day, for you grandparents out there that have to be parents again, to your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren, to you, the single mothers and single fathers out there who wish to fall in love again, but you can't because you have priorities, your children that you're taking care of, for you wives that have to keep on working because your honey's sick in the womb or sick at the hospital, and you know that he's just not going to make it, and for you husbands out there whose wives are, you know that they're sick At the last city council meeting, Councilman Soto said that ag was the backbone of the community. Eh, no problem, sure thing, but I would say to you, the Santa Maria natives, you're the backbone of this community. The greatest asset this city has is its people, and for way too long, you've been second and third down the line. There are other issues interfering with city issues. How much longer must you take? How much longer must you just sit down and just allow those who represent you to push you to the side? I have a candidate, and I say this very clear, that my candidate, I used to know this gal, Madam Chair, she was strong, independent, a moneymaker, she knew how to make money, she knew how to run a business. I remember that lady one time told me that the greatest asset was the people of this community. I long for that gal, Madam Chair, I don't know where she's at, I can't see her. I know she's there, but I just can't see her, and I know if she was here, she wouldn't allow these things to go on. She wouldn't allow Ms. Waterfield to blame the staff for the issue of the H2A. She wouldn't allow, or she wouldn't bother them speaking, but she would have let them, put them straight, and told them, no, the backbone is the community. During when those comments were made, not Mr. Cordero, Michael Moats, none of you came up and defended the staff, and defended the backbone, the community members. I don't know where that gal's at, but I wish she was here, Madam Chair, I miss that gal. I know that the fallen individuals ain't the saints, and they ain't, they're not flawless, but I assure you that if Mr. Santino was here, Mr. Labanino was here, and Marty Mariscot was here on that bench, we'd be much better off, things would be different. Now, there are those that are going to sit on this bench and say, no, that was the problem, but I assure you right now that we need people like that, we need the natives to come back and start running this show. We have crises of our own. I have no problem with the ag here, but this should be the people here, and you should be taking care of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments? Moving on, the consent calendar, Madam Kirk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I do, Madam Mayor, item 3C, please, for discussion.
3C? Pardon? 3C. Mr. Cordero?
I have one.
Okay, turn to 3C. And that's the application for energy efficiency loan from the California Energy Commission for 2.9 megawatt ground-mounted and solar array. Mr. Y. Miller? Were you going to?
I'm just preparing to respond.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was reading the staff report, I just wanted to get clarification as to the size, the size that you all were considering, that this was, how big these solar panels were, how much space they were going to take, and then also ask for whether there's been other locations considered.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember, Mayor and Council. First of all, to answer the second, let me answer the second question first. And no, we did not consider other locations because of the nature of the project that was presented to us. We were presented with the funding opportunities, that's kind of infrequent, when we get these opportunities, that would enable us to build a solar array, and therefore, it'd be able to generate some income, and save some energy dollars for the city and for its customers. But this wasn't a situation where we set about, like, you know, classically, we're going to build something, let's build the solar array, now let's find the place that's best to put it. This was the, taking advantage of an opportunity that we have a location already owned by the city, and is otherwise unsuitable for any other application. It's on top of what used to be known as the old burn dump. So it's a portion, a section of the landfill-owned area, and otherwise would not be built. So not only is there no cost of acquisition of land, which has to factor into the overall viability, economic viability of the project, so there's no cost for the acquisition of land, and there's also no opportunity cost, that is, there's nothing else we can do with this land. If we were to locate it someplace else, not only would we have land acquisition costs, but we would be excluding whatever other applications of use might be available for those particular locations. And as to your question about the size, Mr. McKinnon, if you would, this is a little bit of layout of the location we talked about, and it will probably be somewhere around eight acres of coverage that creates a 2.9 megawatt capacity of energy production.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the savings to the city that it would bring?
Right, sure thing. And make sure I, our anticipated annual savings is going to be somewhere around $460,000, and we only had to come out of pocket for all of, if you remember, we have about 16 different distinct energy projects going on, and the entire amount that we were out of pocket for all of those was $528,000, so we're going to be cash flow positive rather immediately with this project.
And absolutely, solar is the best way to generate energy at this point, and I'm really happy to hear that the city's looking into that. Yeah, and just to clarify, is the loan that we're applying, the loan that we're applying for, is that just, sorry, is the loan that we are applying for, is that going to be for the full three? Is it, the three, can you let me know the amount?
Sure, it is. We're applying for a loan up to $3 million for this particular funding source. Our total energy projects have a number of funding sources that we're pursuing that are either zero interest or low-cost, very low-cost dollars, in most cases, it's $3 million for this particular funding program that we're seeking.
So right now, we're just going to apply, we're going to do, are we doing further study and then moving forward?
We're pretty well at a point where we're able to make an application, so we're making application for the loan amount, and as far as study, we're pretty well prepared to present our business case as to why we would be suitable awardees. It is a competitive process, but we're highly confident on our ability to win that award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
No, Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, if there wasn't any other items to pull, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next order of business is appointments. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title and give the staff report?
The city council will consider making one appointment to the Block Grants Advisory Committee and one appointment to the Central Coast Water Authority. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the request before you tonight is to make the two appointments to the boards I just mentioned. I'll present the boards one at a time for consideration of the appointments and the council's ratification. I'll begin with the Block Grants Advisory Committee, which has one unexpired term to fill ending in July 2020. This vacancy occurred with the recent resignation of Rosario Seguizi, who was Madam Mayor Patino's nomination. Staff received one new application from Sarah Mostafa. Following the nomination appointment by the mayor, the city council will ratify the appointment to fill the unexpired term ending in July 2020.
Okay, then I will nominate Sarah Mostafa to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the city council will ratify the ma- Next up is the City Council will ratify the mayor's appointment of one council member to the Central Coast Water Authority, or CCWA. CCWA is a regional board, and each member agency appoints its own representative to the board along with alternates. Director of Utilities, Shad Springer, is currently the alternate. Madam Mayor, Patino is to make the appointment with ratification by the City Council.
I will make a motion to appoint Councilmember Waterfield as the city's representative to CCWA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider adopting the Measure A five-year local program of projects through fiscal year 2023-24.
Staff report is to be made by Director, Mr. McKeon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and the public. Tonight's presentation is on Measure A and its role providing the critical funding for the city's street-related operations and infrastructure. We'll start with a brief review of the annual street revenues and the general expenditures necessary for a successful and effective street maintenance program. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll review the city's proposed five-year program of projects funded by Measure A and ask for adoption of that plan. Oh, I guess I need to start the, let's go back. Okay, so there are five main categories of street revenues that we use in Santa Maria. The largest funding type is Measure A, and that's approximately 42% of the revenues. The other categories of street road funding include the required maintenance of effort, SB1, gas tax, and local surface transportation grants. If you add all the colors of money together in Santa Maria, we receive approximately $12 million per year for street maintenance. One of the primary tools we use when planning expenditures for street maintenance is called the pavement management program. You may recall a presentation to City Council last October on this topic. The chart before you is a representation of the condition of our street infrastructure. On a scale from 0 to 100, with 100 being a newly paved street, the overall Santa Maria street network has a rating of 70. And that's right on the border between what we call good and fair in terms of the rating. Although 70 meets the industry's standard goal, it's important to understand that the PCI trend overall is downward over time, meaning we're not spending as much as we should to keep that condition stable. Five years ago, our rating was approximately 74, and now we're down to 70. As you may recall, the city's street network is the largest city asset with a value of over $1 billion. So any successful pavement preservation plan focuses on operations, a combination of operations and capital projects. Operations are represented on the left-hand side of the photos. These are kind of in the keep things working category. These are daily work by city crews to keep the right-of-way functional, safe, and efficient for use by the public. Examples include signing and striping, asphalt repairs, concrete repairs in asphalt, various pavement treatments, and slurry seals. These tasks, while critical to the daily performance of the street network, do not necessarily increase that PCI rating we just talked about in the previous slide or extend the useful life. Certainly critical, but they don't perform those services. On the right-hand side are some examples of capital projects. These projects are selected and prioritized by that pavement management system we talked about, and they do extend the useful life, and those are important projects. Both tasks together are necessary, and they're both funded by Measure A, so I wanted to give you some examples of those. So let's talk about Measure A. What is that? That Measure A is a half-cent sales tax. It was approved by all the voters in the County of Santa Barbara in 2008. Strong support. Santa Maria voters voted 79% to approve the program, and it's a 30-year tax. Sunset's in 30-year, so we're about a third of the way through that. So this is very important to the city, to maintain a street network, and as we approach that 2040 date, we're going to have to start strategizing on what to do next. It will generate over $1 billion in transportation-specific purposes in the Santa Barbara County. And again, these are people buying things in Santa Barbara County, and the funds are used in Santa Barbara County. So it's a very local and specific tax. It also has benefit, because it's a sales tax, if people from out of the county, say from Napoma, come to Home Depot and buy something, they pay half a percent on their sales tax. We get to use that on our roads here to maintain our infrastructure. The voters voted in an investment plan of three main categories. 13% of it goes off the top to Highway 101, and that's been an ongoing project that is being widened in the South County. There was then also a North County program of regional projects, and those are being delivered by SB CAG. And there's also a South County program. Those were split evenly between the North and the South. So now I'd like to introduce my colleague, Principal Engineer Roger Olds, and help present the this year's five-year program of projects.
Thanks, Kevin. This year's Measure A program of projects is consistent with the percentages from in past years. The staff works very hard to ensure that the Measure A program is fully utilized, meaning that we do spend all of the Measure A revenues that we receive, consistent with the program of projects. This is a balanced program of projects. From an operations perspective, as Kevin mentioned, Measure A is used by Public Works streets crews for their daily work to maintain the roadway, sidewalks, signage, street lighting, and traffic signals, and also by wrecking parks for some of the right-of-way landscaping that's also included in our program of projects. From a capital perspective, some of the projects most recently completed with Measure A were the Bradley Media Improvement Project that was on Bradley Road, providing a second left turn lane into the Costco Shopping Center, which greatly relieved congestion at Mehan and Bradley Road. Also, the 2018 slurry project was funded wholly by Measure A. And then the updated pavement management program, as Kevin mentioned, we just did a complete boots-on-the-ground survey of the entire city, and we updated our program with new data, and that was funded completely out of Measure A as well. And then upcoming, the Betarravia Highway 101 system improvements that we have, we're out to bid, we're waiting to receive some materials in order to start, that will be funded mostly by Measure A as well. So that's an upcoming capital project that is funded by Measure A, that's from a capital program perspective. Go to the next slide, Kevin. So as part of Measure A, there's a 15% requirement. We have to spend 15% of what we receive in Measure A on alternative transportation. That's sidewalks, pedestrian improvements, bikeways, even some transit improvements as well. So, and that gets audited every five years, so every five years, we have to complete that task and make sure that we are on track. So our current city budget does meet that 15% percentage for what we expect to receive in Measure A, and we are on track after fiscal year 1920 to meet that by, we're at about 15.1%, is what we're on track based on our budgeted amounts, but if you do accumulate the other projects that aren't, other capital projects, we're well over that 15%. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Kevin, and he can conclude the presentation.
So we recommend we hold a public hearing on the program of projects that Mr. Olds presented to you and adopt the resolution approving the Measure A five-year program for years 1920 through 2324. And we're available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, and this is for either Mr. Olds or you. I have been receiving a lot of constituent complaints in regards to our road system throughout the city of Santa Maria, and I realize we just came through a very wet, rainy season, which is something that we needed to get, that we needed to have. Where are we going to start? Where and when are we going to start repairing the roads?
Councilwoman Waterfield, we are currently working on our program using the pavement management program. We're currently working on developing our next year's, this next fiscal year's project for, we're calling it Surface Transportation Project, which is chip seal and slurry seal. Those roads have been identified. I can't speak to exactly what roads they are, but there are several. With that, we've worked with our streets department, and they're going to be getting to work. You know, they usually start in the spring, which is coming up. They will be starting to do some of the preparation work, doing the crack sealing, doing some minor patch paving as well. And then we are looking at doing some other treatments as well to try to stretch our payment dollar. One project that we've done that seems to be very successful, that we're looking to do on about 10 streets this year, was what we call a thin maintenance overlay. We did it this past year on Chapel, near the hospital, is one of the streets we did, and it was very successful, and it seems to be holding on very well. And that was taking a street that is heavily distressed and putting a thin overlay of rubber-treated asphalt and basically making it new, making it look new.
At what point do we contact Caltrans for our Main Street and for Broadway? I know that underneath the overpass of 101, that deteriorates quickly, and I know Caltrans is usually slow to respond. So do we repair it and bill them for the repairs we do? What is the procedure of getting the entire Main Street done?
The procedure would be continue to pursue something with Caltrans. If they don't want to pursue it, then we can certainly enter in a conversation, but we would have to spend our dollars on a roadway that isn't really in the management responsibility of the city.
Absolutely.
I can tell you that Caltrans is planning on overlay that section of Main Street underneath the freeway. They are going to be out there this spring doing some potholing of utilities. We've been contacted to confirm. I worked with utility staff to confirm that our water lines, that nothing needed to be replaced. We are going to have to pay our portion of lowering and raising the water lines, the water valves, once that's done, but they are planning on doing that. And then Broadway, Caltrans is planning, I think, 2021, is planning a complete resurfacing of the entire length of Broadway through town.
Okay, and another street that really needs it is Blosser. That street is pretty much in bad shape, and I realize, you know, we do have the heavy vehicles that go through, so if there's something more that we can do to that road, that would be great.
I certainly talked to my staff, and we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Soto?
I see that 15% of the monies need to be spent on alternative transportation. Are we using that 15% for the active transportation plan, or that's through a separate grant? Can you remind me, please?
The, good point. The local match for our ATP grant is out of Measure A. So that's about $50,000.
And does that soak up the full 15%?
No, no. The 50% is about $850,000, just off the top of my head. I'm not exactly what the exact number is. But that will be, we're going to be utilizing that for some, a few bikeway projects, and then also some major sidewalk repair throughout town. We recently put out to bid a major sidewalk repair project that's going to use quite a large percent of that 15, quite a large percent of the 15%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there was an answer to Ms. Waterfield's question, I kind of missed it. Does the state of California enter into a working agreement with the cities to say, okay, we'll fix it, you hire the city to fix the 166 and the 135? Does that ever happen? And I kind of thought that, I kind of wished it was going with that, but does that ever take place because, God bless them for what they do, they do have the entire state of California to maintain? So is that possible to work with those two governments?
I can't speak to whether it's ever done. I certainly would think it would be a possibility. We do have an agreement with Caltrans for the maintenance of the sidewalks along Main and Broadway. So, I mean, we certainly could enter into an agreement with them on that and have them reimburse us. It would have to be something that's negotiated and make sure that we are paid fairly for not only the work, but also our administrative, our administration of that work. We haven't approached Caltrans in that regard. We certainly can inquire.
I just wondered if that wouldn't be something that could take place, and it would take the, they're going to spend the same amount of money, they could just take the workload off of them if we had the personnel to do that. I'm not even sure we have the personnel to do that, but it just seemed to be expedite the restoration of the streets. It's something that was just really impressive from when you started talking, when Kevin started talking, is that I remember thinking to myself that right here in the little Santa Maria, we have a $1 billion asset that we just drive on. We don't even, we don't think about it, you know? But if we had to rebuild it, it would cost us $1 billion, which we don't have. So our maintenance program that we do to maintain that, I think, is certainly to the benefit of our community. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Well, do we have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we have to open our public hearing.
Okay, I'd like to open up for the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Not for this item.
Oh, okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring the item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 23 to 24.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the resolution approving the Measure A five-year program of projects. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
The next order of business is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to hear protests against the abatement of public nuisances such as dangerous weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt. And if no majority protest exists, authorize the Director of Public Works to perform the abatement of the nuisances from the public and unimproved private lots.
So staff report is to be made by Public Works Director, Mr. McKeon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 19, 2019, you adopted a resolution declaring 175 lots a public nuisance under Title V, Chapter 8 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code, due to weeds and debris on the lots. The abatement letters have been mailed to the property owners directing the nuisance be abated, or the city would perform the work by a contractor at the property owner's cost. And tonight, I request that you hold a public hearing to receive comments or objections on the property list and then adopt the proposed resolution. If directed by council, staff's next step would be to perform the abatement on the lots not already abated, and the property owners be charged for this work. And that would be charged on property tax bills. Typically, the lots abated are much less than 175, it's more in the 20 range, just for scale, and so that's the history, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments on the.
Any questions to Mr. McKeon? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor. There were no written communications or written protests received.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Any requests, no requests to speak, so I'll close the public hearing, bring the item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt a resolution approving the overruling of objections to the abatement of nuisances from the lots in the city. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
The next order of business is a final public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider, one, zoning code text amendment options regarding employee housing, including the option presented in the Planning Commission recommendation; two, a zoning code text amendment to establish a zoning administrator hearing process, amend time limits of discretionary permits, and reorganize Chapter 1235; and three, introduce an ordinance for first reading and continue to a future meeting. an ordinance for first reading and continue to a future meeting for the second reading and adoption, amending Title 12, the City of Santa Maria zoning code, to establish a zoning administrator hearing process, amend the time limits of discretionary permits, reorganize Chapter 1235, and establish provisions for employee housing.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Ing, and Infra City Attorney, Mr. Cinco.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a presentation for a couple of items. Code amendment, Chapter 1235, which includes some technical amendments, and provisions for employee housing, including H2A. This is a timeline of the past year, year and a half.
Excuse me one minute. I'm getting a sign. You can't hear back there?
No, I don't think it's on.
Okay. Hang on one minute. Thank you very much. We'll wait until the mic goes on outside.
Well, we still have a forum.
Mr. Ing, you can proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This slide provides a timeline for events that have occurred in the last year or so, starting back in February 2018. You've passed an urgency ordinance about a year ago, and that expired. And we've held a series of public workshops with the City Attorney's Office and with city staff, and this outlines the number of workshops that we've had, ultimately culminating in a Planning Commission hearing in November 2018 and continued to January 2019. This slide shows, provides context to what we're talking about. There is an agricultural labor demand that is exceeding affordable housing supply. And similarly, there's a need to maintain a labor force, and there's tension with preserving neighborhood character. Tonight, we bring before you a residential ordinance. There are two proposed options, but this is, we understand that this is part of a larger framework. And in the short term, given the existing constraints of limited housing supply, there's an attempt to manage and regulate employee housing to minimize the impacts to neighborhood quality and character. So we're looking at residential zones today, but we can also, we will also include commercial zones in the conversation, and other zoning districts such as industrial zones, and/or other zoning districts that will be compatible for the use. We know that this is a conversation that's resulted from a lack of housing supply. And long-term, we want to increase housing supply, particularly for farm workers. And again, in our residential zones, there's a need for more housing, commercial zones, industrial zones. But also, we can also have conversations with the county and with farm workers, farm owners, on building housing on agricultural sites. So as we explore long-term solutions, this ordinance before you is the first of potentially several other solutions, and that's part of a broader framework. Our city staff, Ryan Hostetter is here. She's our planning manager, and she's been working alongside with our senior planner, Frank Galbrae, on the details of the proposed ordinances. So I will turn the time over to Ryan for the details.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and members of the community here. My name's Ryan Hostetter, and I'm your planning manager. And just to continue on with Chan's introduction, this is something that we'll be looking into in the long term. However, we have been working on something in the short term to address residential. And so that is what we're here to discuss with you this evening. And also, this discussion is not necessarily set in stone. So whatever we do here this evening or at a future meeting, we could report back. We could provide feedback on how it's working, and there's opportunity for future amendment. A zoning code is a living document that the council has the opportunity to amend as the council sees fit in the future. So what we are discussing, however, is the residential component. And I'm going to talk with everyone briefly about what the Planning Commission recommended for residential, what was presented before the Planning Commission, and the options that were presented, and provide a recommendation to your council to deliberate. So I just wanted to provide some context for you all. We highlighted here all of the residential properties. And what the different colors represent here, the yellows, there's different shades of yellow. Yellow is R1, and the brown is R2, and orange areas are R3. And that's our high density there. So these are the properties that we are talking about with this proposed ordinance this evening. So what we are asking of your council is really to provide direction on which residential zones you would like to see employee housing, which includes farm worker housing, but it's an employee housing ordinance. So which zones, if any? What type of review your council thinks is appropriate, dependent upon where you would like to see it? And who reviews and approves the permit applications? So this format, I'm going to continue this format forward, but what we mean here with what type of review, I'll provide a little context here for everybody. There's different types of permits. There's permitted uses, which are allowed by right. The city has a ministerial permit process, which is not a public hearing. It is more of what you would think of as an over-the-counter permit, but it is a permit that's reviewed by city staff under certain criteria. And there's also what we have discretionary permits, similar to what you would know as a conditional use permit, which requires a full public hearing with 300-foot notification. And that process takes a little bit longer. It's a minimum of three to four months. It could take longer with appeal processes, dependent upon the application. So what the Planning Commission has recommended to you all is, with regards to employee housing, was that it was allowed use in all residential zones. However, in your single-family residential and R2, it would be a discretionary conditional use permit, and then it would be a permitted use in R3. The review of the conditional use permit in R1 and R2 would be a zoning administrator hearing. And that is a part of this ordinance, as well as to set up the framework for zoning administrator hearing process. And letters would go out to everybody within 300 feet, and the planning director or designee would conduct a hearing on the zoning administrator items. And so that would be required, this discretionary process would be required for all employee housing in the R1 and R2 districts. The Planning Commission also required that after 18 months, there would be a sunset, in that employee housing would no longer be allowed in R1. So the sunset was specific to the R1 zone, and the commission, their recommendation was that after 18 months, there would be no more allowed in R1. An additional option that was brought up before the Planning Commission, this was staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission, was slightly different. And the main difference here is that there was an opportunity for a ministerial process for some of the employee housing projects, where you would have between seven and 10 residents in the employee housing unit. And it allowed an opportunity for some certainty for a process. There's certainty in the time associated with a ministerial permit. If you meet certain criteria, that you would be issued a permit. However, if you have 11 or more employees, then it would be a discretionary process. So it was slightly different because it said, other than what the Planning Commission approved, which was all employee housing in R1 and R2 would be a discretionary permit, this allowed an opportunity for units with seven to 10, a ministerial option. In addition to this package, you see there's an additional chapter that we are presenting for the zoning code, and that includes the framework for employee housing. It establishes criteria and performance measures that need to be in place. And it also allows a modification process, too. So if we encounter a situation that's unique, which happens, we have the opportunity to allow the applicant to go to a hearing to request modifications in the event that's This is an example of form that we developed. This would be for a ministerial process. So if the council is looking toward a ministerial process, this is an example of a form that one would use. They sign their information on here. They provide 24-hour contact information if there's any issues with the unit, and it provides all the performance criteria that they are signing and agreeing to. With a discretionary process, we don't do this type of form, because the discretionary process includes a staff report with conditions of approval. So that would be the mechanism that would be in place for a discretionary process. And in addition, in this package, there's some technical amendments as well. We're creating this 1254 chapter. We've set up a zoning administrator hearing process, and we've reorganized some sections of our code as well to establish the process. We've also established time limits for discretionary permits, and we worked with members of the development community to develop that language, and didn't have any questions at the last Planning Commission hearing, as they were agreeable to that. So at this point, it's really a technical addition at this point in time. So with that, we are asking your council to look at these questions. Where employee housing should be located? What type of permit would be required? And who would authorize those permits? Would it be a zoning administrator or a Planning Commission hearing, for example? Just to remind everyone, the Planning Commission's recommendation is what was called Option A in your package, and that requires a discretionary permit for all employee housing. And there's also an Option B, which is if you are between seven and 10 employees, there's a ministerial process. And we recommend that you approve the technical amendments as a part of this package. So with that, we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Soto?
Not yet.
Dr. Moats?
Sorry.
With measure, or with Option B, in R1 housing, for seven to 10 persons per unit, that would be done via ministerial in Option B.
That is correct.
And that means that there would be no noticing of the people around an H2 house that was about to be converted into a higher-density employee domicile. Does that mean that you could come home to your house, say, in Hancock Park someday, and there'd be a big truck pulling in with 10 bunks to put in the house next door to you? And you'd be unaware of that? And you'd be told that we're going to put H2A in here, you're going to have 10 people living next to you this weekend?
So what it would mean is, in Option B, for employee housing, if you have between seven and 10 people, it would be a ministerial process, and no notice would be sent out.
So you could be surprised.
Did you have a question, Mr. Cordero?
Primarily for the listening public, would you just give a thumbnail description of R1, R2, and R3? Some people, I think, really don't know what that means.
Sure, absolutely. And I think I have an additional slide I can pull up, too. So essentially, R1 is what we would consider single-family. And that includes, we have what's called a density. And in zoning California planning law, we don't regulate the number of people in a building. We regulate density, which means number of units on a property. So in R1, what is typical in Santa Maria is somewhere between four and eight units per acre. R2 is just slightly smaller lots, and you would see more like 12 units per acre. R3, your high-density, it would be anywhere from 22 to 30 units per acre. And I have a slide here. Let's see if I can pull this up. So this is a typical R2. Let me find this. This is what you would see. This is actually just west of College. And this is an R2 neighborhood here. And you see, it looks pretty close to single-family. There's a lot of smaller cottage-type residential units here. But there are slightly smaller lots than your classic R1, which could be, is this lighter yellow here on the right? That's R1, and the lots are a little bit bigger. So that's really the difference between R1 and R2 here.
Okay. Thank you. I see that as we look at the R1, 2, and 3, that R1 kind of sits alone, and that there is some correlation, some connection nexus between R2 and R3. Yet, the R2 is being reviewed more closely with R1 in some of these documents. So I'm trying to put this together. So I'm trying to put this together to make it make sense for me. The permit process that you spoke of, where somebody comes in and somebody wants to file a, they don't think it should go, can that person live in, say in Napa and come and say, you know, I don't think this is right? Can they come in and do that? Any citizen can come in, or anybody can come to the podium and say, nah, I'm against this. Is that possible?
So if a discretionary permit is required, it's a public hearing, so anybody could come and provide comment on that permit.
Whether they live in the area or not?
That's correct.
I find that a bit cumbersome, and wouldn't really take much effort to organize a small group of people to say, okay, we've got, we've got some things we want to fight in this area over here, and create something that could turn into a monster. And I think we should be working more together and creating something that is, creates a cohesiveness within us all, a synergy within the community. And I'm not sure that that's happening with that process.
I'd like to respond, to tack on to your, to what you're saying.
Yeah, so without that, without that cohesiveness in that, that we need to generate, how do we, how do we move forward? I think that we keep throwing things down in front here. There was a headline in the paper today about H2A in another, in another community. So we, we need to establish an end game here. I think the entire council received a letter from someone in the community, Andy Caldwell, that said we should stop everything and create this committee of, it sounded like about 15 people. I think we're even beyond that, and we need to resolve this to completion. We need to bring this to an end. When the Union Valley Parkway was in, when I was on the council the first time, it was on the books for like 21 years, right?
Right.
About 21 years. And I remember sitting in this chair and commenting, anything that's been on the books for 21 years should be off the books, or pass it. Let's finish it. And I think this is approaching that same kind of thing. Let's move on with this thing and vote it so that we know what we're dealing with. And it seems like the more we try to help ourselves, the more restrictions that we place on ourselves. And I think that that is somewhat counterproductive. I don't like Option A. I think that, who in their right mind would want to do business for 18 months and then say, okay, we're out of business? I don't know how that came to be. And Option B, I think, maybe needs a little work as well, so.
Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the cohesiveness that Councilmember Cordero talks about, I truly believe, and it's by the law that we have the permitting, because it allows, it's for, mainly for the residents that live 300 feet within a particular project, whether it's H2A, or whether it's a new business going in, or a new subdivision going in, or any type of, any type of structure that would affect those around it. And so I truly believe, and I know this for a fact for sitting on Planning Commission for 11 years, is that the 300 feet is for the residents nearby. Anybody can come in and comment, anybody can do whatever they want to do because it's a public comment, but it's mainly for those that are directly affected by this type of situation.
Dr. Moats?
We've mentioned conditional use permits. How long does a conditional use permit last? Is there an expiration, or do they last indefinitely?
Councilmember Moats, yes. A part of this package includes time limits for permits, so a conditional use permit would last three years, and the applicant could come in and apply for two-year extensions for that permit.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Cordero, that 18-month in here was because, I think initially, some of the growers said they needed time in order, if they were in H2A housing in a single-family unit, that they needed time in order to move them in someplace else. So that, I think that's where the 18-month came up, am I right?
I think, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Moats, so the question that you had asked pertains to the expiration of a conditional use permit. An applicant has, would have up to three years to establish the use, but that use doesn't expire after three years. So once the use is established, it's established. The expiration or phase-out that Madam Mayor is referring to is part of this Option A that was part of the Planning Commission recommendation, and that is calling for a phase-out of the employee housing use out of the R1, single-family zone.
Right. No questions?
So I'm not quite clear on this. So let's say someone gets a conditional use permit to house 10 persons in R1, and it's established, and he's got the people in there. How long does that conditional use permit last?
Councilmember Moats, the use can remain until it's discontinued.
So it's indefinite?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Senko, did you have anything else? Oh, okay, because it said that both of you would be doing the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, but the staff handled everything, I would want to say anyway.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, there were four written communications that were provided to the City Council and posted with this agenda item on our website. They were from Francesca Shepherd noting that there should be regulations for converting motel hotels to H2A housing. There was one from California Strawberry Commission who supports ordinance Option B. One from Hazel Davalos raising concerns about tenant displacement due to the conversion of rental units in the H2A housing, and proposes an ordinance to address that issue. Four from the Grower Shipper Exchange supporting Option B with the amendment that H2A be permitted use rather than a conditional use in the R2 zone district. And then we also received a phone call from Steve Johnson to speak with the city manager earlier today, and he wanted us to provide his comments that he strongly opposes the H2A housing in residential communities, and that should and not be allowed.
Thank you. So I'll open up the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak tonight?
Twenty requests to speak.
Twenty requests to speak, okay. So, Councilmembers, do you want to give everyone three minutes? Do you want to give them two minutes? What is your?
The three minutes is fine.
Three minutes, okay?
Fine with me.
Fine with me. I took pain medication before I came.
Okay, so Claire Weinman, followed by Hazel Davalos, followed by Cheryl Hassan.
Hold on a second. At what point are we supposed to report out that we've met with some of these people?
Actually, you can do it now if you'd like.
Okay. I have met with Ms. Weinman at her request, and I met with Laura Brown at her request, and some of these matters were openly discussed, and...
Now, let me ask you something. Mr. Senko, the ex parte, is this, does this go back to the beginning, or how far do we report ex parte? I mean, this has been going on for over a year.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I would just report any ex partes related to this action that you're about to take, rather than go back to last year.
Okay.
Or any time in between.
And these meetings that I had were within the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
At their request.
Okay.
Okay, I met with Ms. Weinman, Mr. Castaneda, and Mr. Prandini.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes.
Okay.
I spoke to Laura Brown.
Uh-huh. Okay, and I have also spoken to Laura Brown and a member of the Strawberry Commission.
Oh, yeah. Is that who we were asking?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Weinman, it's all yours.
Good evening. My name is Claire Weinman, and I am the president of the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss H2A housing in Santa Maria and advocate for thoughtful and productive dialogue. We continue to believe that the H2A program is already very stringently regulated by state and federal authorities. We also believe that H2A visa holders should have all of the same housing options available to them as any other resident of the city, and are protected from discrimination by state and federal laws. Even as our members are evaluating potential legal action, the association continues to seek solutions that balance community concerns, limited city resources, and the economic viability of agriculture in the Santa Maria Valley. We appreciate the opportunity to comment on the options before the council. We vehemently oppose Option A and the expiration of employee housing uses in 18 months in R1 or any zoning district. We are disappointed that progress has not been made since Option B was first presented to the Planning Commission in January. However, we are willing to forego some points vitally important to our members in an effort to make forward progress. Of the alternatives presented in the staff report, we prefer Option B if it is amended to allow H2A housing as a permitted use in the R2 zones the same as R3 zones, rather than a conditional use in R2. We believe this is a reasonable resolution, given the similarities between R2 and R3, and differences between R1 and R2, as we have presented in our previous comments. In the spirit of compromise, and after extensive discussion and consideration by our members, in exchange for treating R2 zones the same as R3, we are willing to concede a tenant displacement fee in the amount of three months of current rent for the unit in the event that tenants will be displaced by the conversion of the unit to employee housing. Grower Shipper continues to value its healthy working relationship with the city, and we sincerely hope that we can reach a mutually agreeable and amicable solution. We renew our commitment to engaging in the process of working together to develop a thoughtful, reasonable, and equitable path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hazel Davalos, followed by Cheryl Hassan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Hazel Davalos with CAZ. We appreciate that the staff recommendation grandfathered in existing H2A housing to avoid the potential disruption that could result from a removal of farmworker housing from certain neighborhoods. We don't feel comfortable with the effect of heavily concentrating new H2A housing in high-density R3 zones of the city by restricting it in both low-density R1 and medium-density R2 zones. Our high-density zones are currently home to many low-income renters who are vulnerable to displacement. If H2A conversions are concentrated in R3, we will likely see a significant loss of the city's scarce affordable housing stock for local families, including our year-round farmworkers. We also have concerns over the notification of neighbors about farmworker housing nearby. While some legal notices are required for certain types of permits, we need to be careful of the unintended consequences of overdoing notifications about certain types of residences, and the potential for the tragedy we saw in Napa to repeat itself. The best way to address the impacts of H2A housing on our neighborhoods would be to prevent the displacement of Santa Maria residents through the removal of affordable rental units. The booming demand of H2A housing creates an incentive for landlords to convert their buildings to house a dozen seasonal workers instead of renting to one local family. Displacement of rental units will particularly impact our fixed-income seniors, our young people starting out on their own, and our low- and moderate-income working families, including local farmworkers. Displacement of local renters also worsens the problem in the long run. One of the main reasons for the need for H2A is it's become harder and harder for local farmworkers to find an affordable apartment to rent in Santa Maria. If our low-cost rental housing stock is converted into H2A housing, it will worsen the shortage of local workers, resulting in farms needing even more H2A and creating an endless cycle. There's a great model for a solution. The city of Santa Barbara and the county of Santa Barbara require landlords to provide financial assistance to any displaced tenants if they renovate their building or convert it to condominiums. We could use the same policy here to address the displacement of tenants for employee housing. A simple requirement to provide three months' rent to any tenant displaced by their building being converted to employee housing would have strong legal precedent and allow the agricultural industry to meet its needs while avoiding unintended negative consequences in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Hassan, followed by Carlos Casanova.
Good evening, Councilmen and Councilwomen. Well, it's been a long year since I started this, but I wanted to say, first of all, when we started this, we didn't know anything about this. So when I saw the, where they let us know about the 300 feet, I was happy about that because then we could find out about it, who's in our neighborhoods and stuff, because we knew our neighbors. We knew everybody on our street, and we knew what they were, you know, who they were, where they, you know, we all worked together, and we cared about our block. Now it's not, and a lot of the neighborhoods aren't like that anymore, and nobody's going to want to come, because why would you buy a house and not know who your neighbors are? And have a house be vacant for four months and look like it's deserted? And that's what happened in our neighborhood. It looked like somebody just deserted it for four months. I think they moved along twice, and that was it. It's not fair to the people who put roots in Santa Maria to have people come in and have, be there, and I understand, you've heard my story, I am from a farming family, but come in and stay there for a few months and leave. What are they bringing to Santa Maria also? I know they're working, but a lot of the farms are in the county, not in, some of them are in Santa Maria, but the most are in the county. So what is Santa Maria gaining from that? They buy a few things here, but most of them money goes back to their families where it should. Do they pay state and local taxes, income taxes for us? No, that's what I'm saying. The farmers do, yes. I feel like the residents are David, and the farmers in agriculture are Goliath. We've got a little stone to throw. They've got the money, the lawyers, the commercial people behind them. We have just us and you guys. And it is Santa Maria's right to put legal, to put limitations on things. That is Santa Maria's right. Yes, I know it's a federal law, and a state law, but Santa Maria can make it stronger and give the residents a right to who can be here in their neighborhoods, so we can have a voice. Because when I came, when we first came, you know what happened in our neighborhood. Then we made up. Well, then they turned around this and came back and said, we're here again. That's not right. They broke their promise, I'm breaking mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Casanova, followed by Leopoldo Complido.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, the first H2A employees were introduced to our community about six years ago, and they're pretty much undetected, and I think we all need to ask ourselves why. These model guests, they've had zero encounters with law, with any type of law enforcement. In fact, I'd take that a step further, and I'd say we've had zero calls for public service at any H2A housing. Last March, the city passed emergency ordinance to stop any type of H2A housing. In the Ad community, rather than sue the city or take this out to court, they took a diplomatic... a diplomatic approach, even though our neighbor down the street had a different outcome, which was very positive for Ag. By participating in the town hall meetings we've helped educate our community, Ag has also improved our community, investing in R1, R2, R3, and commercial properties throughout our great city. I believe the city should embrace this. We're adding inventory. My father and I personally picked up heroin needles from empty lots where we built new inventory. I don't think that was a very well-suited property for our city. I ask that you support Option B with the two amendments that were mentioned earlier today. This is an opportunity to increase supply and also address R2 as what it really is. There's properties that are R2 that have five, six, seven, or more buildings on them that have been used for H2A for over five years without any issues. And I guarantee you, they're not an eyesore to those communities. For those that are concerned about where H2A will be, it's not economically viable to build, remodel, or have H2A in Hancock Park or Terrace. I assure you that the business model does not work. As was mentioned earlier, the community of agriculture is willing to add a three-month displacement to show the good faith of actually trying to solve this tonight. This has been a long process, well over a year, and a lot of us are just trying to feed our families. These gentlemen want nothing more than to work here and feed their families, and they're scared to death that their job opportunity might no longer exist. Finally, the 18-month, I just want to add some light, even though I'm absolutely opposed to Option A, the 18-month is ridiculous. If you think about a small mom-and-pop farmer investing their life savings in R1 property, and they're using it until the end of the year for H2A, and then by the time they stage the property to sell it, we've already gone through eight months to a year. By the time they 1031-exchange or replace that property with an R2 hopefully, or R3, that process is more than 18 months.
Thank you, Mr. Castaneda.
Can I ask Mr. Castaneda?
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Ms. Dr. Mose.
Mr. Castaneda, what are your thoughts on noticing people in advance if someone opts to put seven to 10 people in an R1 community?
I think that's a reasonable ask by community members. The process that it's done is my concern. My office is a block and a half away from the incident in Nopomo, so it was very near and dear to us. We took our signs down right away because we were in fear of our staff getting hurt, someone getting hurt just because of that incident. How your staff comes up with a plan to notice, I don't have an answer for you, a councilmember. But I do feel it's an honest ask to sue your neighbors, so they're aware of what's happening. So I don't think anyone in the Ag community would be opposed to that. I think it's how we do it. No one wants to put a big flag or a big sign in front of these properties, so if there is anyone with bad intentions, they don't hurt anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leopoldo Complido.
Madam Mayor, if I may, unless you have a translator, may I translate for Leopoldo?
That would be fine.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Gracias por esta oportunidad que me brindan para poder exponerle mi experiencia como gente contratada que hemos venido en esta ciudad.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my experience as a contracted employee.
Como en primer lugar quiero compartirles sobre el trato humanitario que hemos recibido por parte de los trabajadores de esta compañía. Mi gran reconocimiento para ellos porque son personas que siempre están dedicados a su trabajo, siempre están empeñados en todos los aspectos para nosotros. Siempre nos han mostrado su apoyo incondicional para resolver cualquier situación, cualquier problema que se nos presenta.
First, he'd like to recognize his employer, I didn't write this, that it's been very humanitarian and the treatment that he's been received, that he's experienced by his employer and the staff. He just wanted to recognize, he's been very dedicated and very supportive, and any issues have been resolved immediately.
Así como también a nombre de todos mis compañeros contratados estamos muy agradecidos con estos programas que han implementado gracias al gobierno. Esto para nosotros es un medio para conseguir nuestras mejores condiciones para nuestras familias porque con esto nos está ayudando para poder obtener nuestros beneficios ya sea construcciones de vivienda, compra de ganado, adquisición de vehículos que sin duda alguna es una gran necesidad para nosotros, incluso emprender negocios pequeños pero es un gran apoyo gracias a este programa.
He's very grateful for the program, the H2A program. Through this program, he's been had an opportunity to build a home for his family, acquire much-needed vehicles, and even start a small business. In addition to that, he's had an opportunity to purchase cattle back at home.
Con respecto a las riendas que nos brindan la compañía están en buenas condiciones, son casas completas que tiene todo lo necesario para estar cómodos, para estar relajados, y sobre todo para preparar nuestras propias comidas a nuestro gusto.
In regards to the housing, been very comfortable. The housing has been suitable. It gives him an opportunity to relax and to get some much-needed rest. In addition to that, it allows us to prepare our own food, our regional food.
Aprovecho también este espacio para plantearles, también aprovecharle, para solicitarles que siga interviniendo para que se siga ampliando más el programa de contratados. Quisiera que le intervengan para que nuestro gobierno de esta ciudad siga empeñando su labor, para que usted le lleve ese mensaje pues ya que es la única manera para poder estar aquí de manera legal.
We ask for the city's support to continue supporting this program. This program is the only legal way for us to come here and work.
Quiero terminar con estos dos puntos. Para agradecerles infinitamente esta gran oportunidad de estar aquí en este país. Tengo cinco años, bueno, cuatro años de estar viniendo a esta ciudad, y soy testigo que todos mis compañeros contratados son gente buenos, son gente confiables, para que todos ustedes estén tranquilos, no tengan miedo, son gente de buenos valores y principios para que no tengan el mal pensamiento de que somos gente malos, no. Hasta yo me siento parte de esta comunidad porque hemos acatado el reglamento que tiene esta ciudad las leyes. Todos mis compañeros contratados siempre están respetando las leyes, pero también si vemos alguien que está intentando o quiere, está pensando en cosas negativas, siempre nos organizamos para clasificarlos. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll let you go ahead and just finish up the translation.
Sure. So on that final statement, he wanted to clarify that he and his coworkers come in here as a witness to him and his coworkers that come here with a good heart, good morals, and that they bring no harm to anyone. They want to clarify any potential misunderstandings or thoughts, that they come with any bad intentions, they're here to respect our local laws, and if they see any of their coworkers getting out of line, they're the first to strengthen them out because no one wants to lose this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay. I would please ask you not to clap after the comments because it just takes a lot of time, and I can't announce the name, and our clerk needs to get the name of the next person. So if you would please, thank you. John Herb, followed Ken by Ken Triguero, followed by Felipe Mendoza. I could read your writing tonight.
Yes. Mayor Patino, councilmembers, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak, and I really wanted to... Gracias por venir. Buena noche. Realmente su trabajo nos ayuda bastante. Our local growers, whether we wouldn't be able to survive without the work of these gentlemen and many, many others. You know, the growers pay roughly 30% more to bring in guest workers, and so it's more expensive. And the only reason that they're doing it is because they need to, because they don't have a sufficient workforce to get the crops picked. And we live that every day. Now, the concern of the local community is completely legitimate concerns, and I think what you've already heard already, there's a desire by Ag to say, "Hey, how can we find a win-win solution here?" And so mitigating displacement, minimizing displacement, those things are super important, and I know you guys appreciate that, and we're really trying to find a holistic solution. So thank you for doing that. One point I want to bring up is we're looking at short-term solutions today. Now, regulating our way out of all this isn't really going to get us, it's not going to advance us where we want to be. And so I've alluded to in the past, you know, a study that was done in the city of Salinas, or commissioned by the city of Salinas, that looked at the Salinas Valley, the Barroto Valley, and the Watsonville area. And the big takeaway from that is there's a lack of inventory. We don't have the supply. We have a supply-demand problem. And so what I really want to encourage the councilmembers to think about, even though we're addressing short-term issues today, which is just great, is looking at the long-term. How are we going to augment supply? You know, what are those solutions? And really, with uncertainty, delays, and these types of things, it really is just one thing that kind of gets in the way of potential investors saying, "Yeah, I want to invest in this community, I want to invest in augmenting supply." And so keep that in mind, please, even though we're dealing with short-term issues today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Triguero, followed by Felipe Mendoza, followed by Alex Mendoza.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Ken Triguero, people said help housing. Didn't mean to interrupt you there. So we're a local nonprofit affordable housing developer, been here since about 1970 locally. We have a few different properties here in Santa Maria. They serve farmworkers, that's a significant part of what we do. So we've been in listening mode here and participating in the workshops, and we're hoping to be a part of the solution here eventually. It feels like the longer-term solution is definitely building more new units for this purpose, so we're working on that. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments with respect to wherever you land on your ordinance, we're hoping to see enough time for the compliance period. So with the 18-month time period to comply, it seems best if these new units that we're hoping, among others, to bring forward will coincide with that amount of time. And as you know, if it's new units that we're producing, it takes quite a long time. Once the ordinance is settled, then we're going to go out and identify properties, evaluate them, negotiate for them, move them through the entitlements if it's a discretionary process, finance and build them. So we're hoping there could be some flexibility on that 18-month, perhaps at the staff administrative level, to figure out if there's substantial compliance, let's say, that there would be a path to sort of bridge that. And then the other issue that we're looking for is, of course, certainty. So all the developers like ourselves who, again, want to be a part of this solution are looking for enough time and enough certainty on what to inspect so we can start investing. We're ready, but we're not able to until everything is solid. So that's it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Felipe Mendoza, followed by Alex Mendoza.
Good evening, Mr. Council. Buena noche a todos. Me gustaría hablar en mi idioma para ver si nos podemos entender. Necesito alguien que me pueda interpretar como debe de ser.
Sí, está bien.
Okay.
Do we have an interpreter tonight? No.
Mr. Castaneda.
Mr. Castaneda, would you like to...
You can send us a bill.
Okay. Me gusta alguien que estemos en línea los dos porque también él está... Yo vengo, en mi caso, vengo en mi dirección. Enseguida viven trabajadores del campo, que también todos somos. Yo soy trabajador del campo, he trabajado en el campo. La cosa aquí es que nosotros notamos que nos han echado puro de mentiras ahí, han tratado de sostener lo que nos han dicho, y al final del tiempo, o la última vez que han metido gente allí, nosotros sabemos... A mí me presentaban dos personas, los encargadas, pero de ahí no sé quién tengo alrededor. Además, nosotros vivimos en casas de cinco familias.
So he lives in R1, and next door are some H2A employees. He feels he has been misled, been lied to. He's met two supervisors, and that's the only people... Those are the only ones who've introduced themselves to him.
Yes. Y no es que tenga nada contra de nadie, todos somos iguales. Nadie somos más que otros. La cosa es que aquí se está pasando todo porque nosotros antes teníamos seguridad de vivir en un lugar adecuado. Ahorita no es que desconfiamos de ellos sino que no los conocemos tampoco. Entonces, supuestamente, el año pasado hablaron con amigos que esa casa se iba a poner de venta o simplemente se iba a rentar a una familia. Y no pasó eso. Nos volvieron a decir este año, ya para llegar, que la casa iban a traer otra vez con la gente. Entonces, no hay palabra de lo que dicen. Otra vez nos dicen que nomás este año, y el año que viene la casa se pone de venta otra vez. Esperemos que así sea cierto porque a mí definitivamente yo agarré mi casa para mi retainer, y no me siento a gusto simplemente porque yo tengo mi familia, tampoco unos internos seguros de nada. Ustedes están diciendo toda nuestra raza es una raza buena, pero en algunos casos también traemos de todo, ustedes lo saben. En nuestro país es fácil, se compran papeles derechos, y no hay nada de malo. Yo quiero saber si se puede hacer algo todavía porque lo que nosotros hemos hablado con ellos no se está haciendo nada.
Okay. I hope I remember everything. So it was that... Sorry. That he feels he was lied to because the problem that he had with the neighbor was going to be resolved, that was the last year it was going to be used for H2A, and here we are again this year, and it's still being used for H2A for another season. He was told that it was either not going to be used or it was going to be sold, and neither of the two have occurred. So what guarantees does he have that if they do vacate it, will it be sold or will a family be moving in?
Si ustedes lo recuerdan, el año pasado yo vine aquí y hablamos de que supuestamente cuando nos presentamos el problema, ustedes dijeron al Consilio que iban a parar ese programa por diez meses, y a las dos semanas siguientes ya estaba la casa llena de gente, donde estuvo el desorden allí. Ustedes no tenían la atención de eso, o fueron ellos los que tumbaron ventaja de las cosas?
Last time I came and spoke at this council, I was told that this would be stopped for at least 10 months, but two weeks later, H2A had moved in. So was it you, council, that broke your word, or is it the neighbor?
Nosotros pues hemos dado la votación para ustedes para que nos ayuden como ciudadanos, y aparentemente nos están dejando solos. Porque al final de cuentas, aquí los señores ellos hacen su dinero con nuestras compatriotas. Y está bien, pero también deben de buscar un lugar adecuado. Por ejemplo, los motels necesitan más gente para hacer dinero, también es un negocio que también a la ciudad le da ganancias. Pero yo pienso que deben de poner un poquito más de atención en todo eso, no nomás estar sentados allí sin poder hacer nada. Nosotros necesitamos el apoyo de ustedes.
He's looking for your support. He feels that maybe, he understands that these gentlemen came here to make money, but he's wondering why aren't they at hotels? And he's looking for the city, or excuse me, the city council, to support his concerns.
Yo creo que es suficiente lo que les he dicho, y espero que se ponga un poco de atención porque la razón, ustedes están allí porque nosotros los hemos puesto allí también, y necesitamos por lo tanto su apoyo como ciudadanos. Y también ver otra vez, yo no soy en contra de mi raza. Lo que pasa es que también tienen que buscar un lugar adecuado. Si yo estoy en ese lugar es porque me sentía confiado y todo. Todavía estoy confiado, pero las cosas que a veces dicen no es tampoco muy agradables. Okay?
You were there as elected officials because we put you there as citizens, and I don't have anything against my people, but I do think they need to be housed in appropriate locations.
Okay. Gracias, señor.
Muchas gracias.
Alex Mendoza, followed by Kevin G.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, residents of Santa Maria. Happy Tuesday first of all to everybody, you know. It's Tuesday, so almost midway through the week. You know, I was going to speak about something different, but I don't want to put myself on blast, but I'm the neighbor to Cheryl and to Felipe. You know, last year we had a little bit of disagreement, but I told them I had nothing to lie about to them. I feel like their problem with me is personal. You know, I talk to my employees, and I tell them, look, I have some neighbors that are concerned. I'm like, and I have said to them that you guys are here on visas, that they want to know your guys' names. I'll give them their names. I'm like, whatever they want to know, I'm like, you guys are here to work. My employees are never home. They're, 5:00 AM they're gone, 6:00 PM they're back home. I don't see, to see what's too concerned about that. Like I said, I have nothing against them, and if they want, you know, I told them, if you guys want to talk to me, talk to me, but don't put me on blast with the city council. It doesn't look good on my part, and we're not doing anything. You know, Mr. Cinco, he went over, I think, my application last year, and seeing that everybody's here, everybody here is legit, you know, they're not here to cause any trouble. At the end of our contract last year, Mr. Felipe Mendoza and his wife told me, so who are you going to rent your house out to? I'm like, I'm not sure who I'm going to rent my house out to. And then they told me, you know what, your contracted workers, they were pretty mellow. They didn't really do much. I'm like, because, you know, we told them that they have to be on the best behavior, and a lot of them, they have family memberships, so, you know, weekends, they want to get away, you know, go enjoy their time, spend their hard-earned money. And then even Mr. Felipe told me, I have no issue with you housing workers next year. And he told me that. I'm nothing to lie about. I got nothing to lie about up here. So this year, I told my employees the same thing. Look, I'm going to introduce you guys to my neighbor, just so you can know who you guys are. And also, you know, you see him, say hello, say good morning, say good evening, say things to every neighbor you see. They're the only two neighbors that are concerned on that block. And I did tell them last year, you know, we plan to sell the property, but like, even like Mr. Castaneda stated, you can't sell a house in two days and look for another property. It's very tough to do that. You know, my employees are here to work, and that's it. You know, and they feel that they're being discriminated against because, you know, they're not known. It's like judging a book by its cover, pretty much. With that being stated, you know, the things I wanted to state up here today was, I feel that 2018 was a year of learning about the H2A program for everybody here, and the people that already know about it, you know, they know the regulations, the rules. You know, whatever outcome is made today, I feel it might affect the ag program, it might not, that community, I should say, but how come you guys, as city council members, haven't had the time or put the time to talk to each contractor, grower about their housing situation? Where they live, you know, what are their plans? I mean, I've tried to get a hold of you guys before, you know, just because I want to, us as a company, we want to protect ourselves. But that's, if I could finish real quick?
Okay, just wrap it up.
Also, you know, regarding the future of the program, I mean, like I said, 2018 was a learning experience. How come you guys don't take 2019 to see how the season goes, and then go out the end of the year? Which I'm pretty sure that there's going to be guaranteed no police calls and hard-working people here to make money.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mendoza. Kevin G., followed by George Adam, followed by Robert Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the city council. My name is Kevin G. I'm a strawberry here, a strawberry farmer here in Santa Maria, and God willing, I'd like to stay one. I'm standing before you tonight instead of being home with my two boys, who I haven't seen since they woke up at the crack of dawn, to address this vitally important issue. The H2A program is, well, is vital to Santa Maria agriculture, and I'd say it benefits a society in many ways. Hotels and motels have a steady clientele, allowing them to do necessary repairs and cosmetic upkeep. As has been stated over and over again, 911 calls to these addresses are eliminated when properties are converted to H2A housing, saving the city police resources. When contractor buys a property, they spend the time and money upgrading it and beautifying it. For example, a few years ago, we partnered with a labor contractor, and we bought a rundown apartment complex. When we bought it, it required substantial work to get ready. We redid the landscaping, and in doing so, we found needles and other drug paraphernalia in the bushes where it was overgrown, where people were hiding and using them, much the same as the Econolodge renovation. We repainted the building, we rebuilt the roof, decking, drainage, plumbing, and water heaters. We also had to make all of the railing and accesses ADA compliant, and installed LED fixtures. After all that, the contractor we were partners with decided that Santa Maria was too hostile to H2A housing, and urged us to sell, which we did at a loss. The property values in and around that apartment complex are certainly better than they were before, and I would say they would still be better even if we had H2A there. All the time and money that we sunk into that failed venture should underscore how important this program is for us. It is also important to state that most of the end users of H2A labor do not have the ability to build a labor housing complex. Most farmers do not own the land that they're farming in the first place, and building in the country, as you know, is a non-starter due to the lack of infrastructure and substantial costs. Agriculture is facing ever-shrinking margins and a dwindling labor pool. Strawberries need to be harvested twice a week. If you get behind and you don't have the labor to harvest them, they rot on the plant. If they continue to rot, the plant will shut down and will not produce. When you're in that position, the only thing you can do is mow your crop, guaranteeing yourself a loss. The best chance a farmer has is to be able to harvest all of his crop as long as possible because the returns per box are so low. The H2A program gives us a fighting chance, but the decision to use H2A is not one taken lightly. Their labor is expensive, and you have to pay for their food and logistics, as you know. Because of the high cost and our shrinking margins...
You can wrap it up, Mr. G. Not another three minutes, but just go wrap up your thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Basically, please support the B, the B option.
Option.
Option, thank you. And with the amendments to the hardship.
Thank you. George Adam, followed by Robert Gonzalez, followed by Paul Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is George Adam. I'm with Innovative Produce, President in Honor, and I've been here for, I'm the sixth generation, and really want to see this economy continue to thrive. I'm not going to go into a lot of the specifics since Claire and others are going to have gone into that, but I really think that going after the impacts of the economy is what everyone is, you know, wondering, why are we doing all this? And the big thing is, is for all those that, you know, that live in the city, this is a huge economic impact. I was going over some of the numbers. If you take the 2,000 people that are here, and they harvest nine cartons a man-hour, yeah, rich a lot times more, sometimes less, nine hours a day at $10 an hour, that's $1.6 million per day. Okay, so think about that. $1.6 million a day, and if you multiply that by the 150 days that they generally work while they're here, that's $240 million a year. Well, the county ag number is $1.8 billion, and that is a lot, but, you know, $240 million is over 10% of that. And if you look at the multiplier effect, that's $360 million. So you really have to think about what kind of an impact that's going to have on this town if we don't resolve this in a way that there's some kind of transition. Because if you look at, you just nixed the R1, that's half of it. So you're going to lose 5% of the economic, the ag economy in the county, in the entire county. That's what kind of throw that this issue has, and that's why you're seeing everybody really concerned with it. And so for all those people who, you know, don't think it's worth it, or think that, you know, having them in their neighborhood isn't worth it, you know, you have to weigh all the detriments and benefits. And some of the other impacts are all of those year-round operations that depend on the spring, summer, and fall to be able to stay through the winter and depreciate all of those investments that you have all year, and all those employees that are year-round here, all the domestic labor that's here. It all impacts that ability to amortize all of those overhead investments and all of those individuals who can keep those year-round jobs, you know, because they're always there for you when the wintertime slows. There's an increase in the high-paying jobs by having all of these lower-income jobs, and that's the biggest impact to this city, is all of the sales and cooling and everything else that goes, all the support industries that you have are that, over $300 million, it's right into the area. Anyway, can I finish up real quick?
Go ahead, finish up.
A couple minutes. The industry won't be able to compete with Mexico, and we have this, we're going to succumb to this gradually encroaching investment from housing out of the area, and this issue's going to be felt in a matter of degrees. So the more that you respect, it is a matter of degrees. It's not all or nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Robert Gonzalez, followed by Paul Allen, followed by Leo Corona.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Robert Gonzalez, and I was born and raised in Santa Maria, and I am an H2A employer. My company has participated in the H2A program for the last four years. In these last four years, we have brought many contracted workers who have come to live in Santa Maria. They have sacrificed by leaving their families and their homes behind. They have come to Santa Maria seeking the American dream. These hard-working, law-abiding individuals have become our neighbors and our friends. All they ask is to be treated the same as any other resident of the city. Mayor, council members, please consider the impact these great individuals have on our community, not just economically, but socially. By limiting the availability of all housing for H2A, you're limiting the positive impact of our fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Allen, followed by Leo Corona, followed by Alexandra Allen.
Madam Mayor and city council members, my name is Paul Allen, and I just so happened to bring the Santa Maria Times article that we mentioned earlier today. And I like to read just parts of it because I don't have time for the whole thing, but this is the Santa Maria Times article that was written just today. The headline was "Guadalupe H2A Suit Has Cost City Over $250,000 in Legal Fees." The city of Guadalupe has shelled out more than $250,000 in lawyer fees due to litigation prompted by the city council's passage of a 2014 urgency ordinance banning the conversion of apartments into boarding houses. The fees are in addition to a $450,000 judgment that was levied against the city in 2017 after a jury ruled that the city discriminated against Bolivarez Street Apartments LLC, which planned to sell an apartment complex it owned to a buyer who intended to use the units for boarding H2A workers. The city's legal battles was triggered by an urgency ordinance passed during the city council's meeting in September 23rd of 2014. The article goes on and talks about communications between some of the city council members and the mayor. And the mayor was quoted that she was concerned, now this is the mayor of Guadalupe, not the mayor of Santa Maria, that she was quoted as being concerned about illegal, and her quotes were, "illegal, undesirable activities." She also said that, "Just so that there's no confusion about where I stand, if we bankrupt the city over this, it's worth it." Now, this was back in 2014. Maybe they didn't know any better back then. But this is 2019. We've had four, almost going on five years of experience with H2A workers. And these employees are not causing the undesirable activities that was creating a frenzy in Guadalupe. I just can't understand this line of reasoning today because we have had H2A workers here for several years, and as you've heard several times, there has been virtually no problems with the city, with the H2A workers in Santa Maria. I support option B with the amendment of the other two additions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Dr. Moats has a question.
Mr. Allen, can I ask you a question? So you quoted from this morning Santa Maria Times. Did you read the official opinion on the H2A in the Santa Maria Times?
I just read, no, sir, I just read what I had this morning.
Oh, you should read the opinion section, too. You know, the Santa Maria Times supported option A. Did you know that?
I didn't, I didn't read that.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo Corona, followed by Alexandra Allen, followed by Lorena Chavez.
Madam Chair, council members, my name is Leo Corona. I'm here again as an employer of H2A employees, and I consider myself a coworker of H2A employees. And I'm just here to echo what I've been saying all along, okay? These employees, they are not aliens of another planet. They are human beings. And although they may not look like you, they may not speak the language, it doesn't make them any inferior to any of us. They're all here just seeking a better future, like I've stated before. Some of them have been coming here for the last three, four years. They haven't broken any laws. We've had yet to, not even a ticket for that matter from the city. And mind you, some of them do have driver licenses. They've been driving for the last couple of years, abiding by the laws. They have not broken any laws. And you know, for us to sit here and start and continue talking about segregating these people, it's discrimination. It's 2019. And we're all wondering, what are we going to send next? So who represents them? I do. Not just as an employer, as a coworker. I've stated before, they live around my neighborhood. I have no plans on moving just because some of them live next to me. My mom and dad live on the northwest side of Santa Maria. They have them around them. I think everybody needs to open their eyes and open and know the fact that Santa Maria has composed of farm workers. And as I said before, it's not our problem. You know, it's the employer's problems, H2A. Well, what rights the local, the people have that work temporarily in Santa Maria, but these people don't. Who represents them from the city? They're calling Santa Maria their home. They're hoping that an immigration reform comes through so they can all apply and bring their families. But the way Santa Maria's treating them, this will probably not be a city that they're going to want to stay here and live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corona. Alexandra Allen, followed by Lorena Chavez.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Allen. I'm here with Main Street Produce. And Dr. Moats, I want to first clarify, my husband did not intentionally leave out an article, "We don't get to read the paper until we get home from work," which hasn't been yet, but we got the other article in our news feed, and that's why we read one, but not the other. It was not meant to mislead. In any case, like everyone here tonight, I care about our community, and I share the goal that we all do, I believe, working together to forge a path that is well-reasoned and works in the best interest of the community as a whole. But first of all, a little reality check. First, number one, you never get to approve your neighbors before they move in. The world just does not work that way. This is probably one of the only times... This is probably one of the only times in which your neighbors will have actually had their backgrounds vetted. That never happens. Number two, there is no evidence that these workers are creating any of the undesirable activities that people have alluded to. I have been told by a friend of mine who works for the Santa Maria Police Department that their department gets about 165,000 calls a year. I don't know if that's true, that's what he told me. But how many of those calls have come in regarding H-2A workers? Zero that I'm aware of. Statistically, these people are likely to be better neighbors than what we might have right now. And number three, we've heard concerns that this is going to drive up rents, but the proposed course of action will require us to use more, not fewer, homes to accommodate these employees because we're limiting the number of people in a home beyond what the state and federal regulations already do, which is counterproductive. And rents are tight for many reasons, but we can't solve that by trying to eliminate people who hold a certain class of visas and say that those people can't live here to solve our rent problem. Under the Federal Fair Housing Act and California's Fair Employment in Housing Act, discrimination based on national origin is illegal. It's prohibited. And certainly, a city can't write ordinances that have a discriminatory effect whether or not the intent is discriminatory. So even if the ordinance is couched like something like employee housing, that's an obvious proxy for visa status, these anti-discriminatory laws protect everyone who's in this country, including people who are here on an H-2A visa. So I think, you know, that is something to be mindful of, and I'm having trouble accepting that we're going down a good path. I'm really hopeful that we can work together to come up with something that is, first of all, as a threshold matter, legal. I think, you know, that should matter, that should be important, it needs to be legal. And secondly, that ensures that our neighbors are good places for all persons to live, and that our community remains a viable place to do business. There's a lot riding on this, and I really sincerely hope we get it right for all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorena Chavez, followed by Ernest Armenta, followed by Carlton Duty.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, and members of the council. My name is Lorena Chavez. I'm a farmer here in Santa Maria, I was born and raised in Santa Maria. My family has been in the farming business, uh, for over seventy, uh, forty-five years. I'm proud to say that in all these years, our family has provided jobs for many families in this community. I was surprised and offended by a comment from a council member at a meeting, at the last meeting. It was stated that agriculture should be a problem with the county and not the city because most farming takes place in the county. Agriculture should not be seen as a burden, but as an asset to this community. Our family farms in the county, and we farm in the city, but all of our business transaction takes place in the city. I would say that in fact, we are not part of your problem, but we are part of your solution because we are part of this community. All of business transactions of farming companies care, is carried out in the city of Santa Maria, which includes office locations, our banking, our purchasing of supplies, purchasing of fuel, catering services, professional services, and don't forget, farm worker contribution to the city. Agriculture is making a large contribution to the revenue generated by local sales tax. Agriculture considers the city our home, and we are invested in its health and well-being. I am proud to be of an industry that has so generously gives back to this community in many ways. I am confident that we can find a solution and continue to be proud of our city and agriculture community. The statewide housing shortage has put a strain on local economies everywhere. Fortunately, we are now seeing more and more housing constructed in Santa Maria. This is evidence of a strong economy for which agriculture is a big contributor. So I ask of the council to please support option B with reasonable amendments presented. I hope those will be considered thoughtfully. I do oppose any sunset clause on any H-2A housing options as flexibility is needed in this program. I ask of you, let us continue to be part of your solution. So thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. Ernest Armenta, followed by Carlton Duty, followed by Brian Gresser.
This is a good one. Ernest Armenta, city of Santa Maria. To Levi and Jacob, Carlos and Sandra, Bobby and Angela, Joseph Santano, Marty Mariscal, Lawrence Lavallino, to all you thousands at our home, maybe that are watching at home, this is our council. This is the mess we got, that they got us in. See, you don't know this person, but her name is Cheryl. She's sitting way back there in the fifth room. If it wasn't for her, yes, that's the reason all ag and that we're all here is because that lady, that lady is a homeowner. She came and said, hey, can please someone give me a notification? That's all she was asking. And I guess it's been a whole year and something later, and, and here she is. Here she is right there by herself. She spoke to me outside, she shared some words with me that she can't say here, how she feels just stepped out in secondhand, out here on her own, and there's, like she's in, in the wilderness, and there's no one there to help her out, Madam Chair. I, I say, you know what, um, ladies and gentlemen, to the Santa Maria natives and to everybody out there, um, in 2020, we're going to have some elections, and you're going to have to decide what kind of mayor you want. You're going to have to decide what kind of council member you want. You're going to have to ask, do I want Mr. Cudaro up here? And Michael Moats? And Alice Patino? And Gloria Soto? And Mrs. Waterfield? And then all of them are going to get their, they're going to have their factions and their campaign contributors, and the Klan and the cliques they run with. But remember, ladies and gentlemen, you make the final decision. Option A, option B, it doesn't matter to us because guess what? We're, 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 we're just trying to make it day-to-day, us natives. Right here in the city, we're in a financial crisis. We've got a police department that can't function unless the taxpayers come out here and spend more on our day-to-day living. We've got a council that knows there's a pension problem. All these issues, and then we have to deal with your workforce, your, 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 the crisis determined. Yeah, you guys are, you guys do have some serious problems. I mean, I, I, I understand you guys are making good money, or trying to make good money, but you have a, a, a housing problem and a work shortage problem. And, and, and I say this with full respect, though, you're interfering in our city's business. We've got issues here we have to take care of. And if you don't say, I, I mean, if you don't make the right decision today, hey, mark my words, each and every one of you will pay a dear price, more than them, you'll pay a dear price. This will be your legacy. They'll look at you, and when they see you out in the market, and they see you at social events, Madam Chair, they're going to look and say, yeah, that's the one that left us hanging. It happens, we know it. Each and every, every one of you out on this council knows what happens when, when the silent voter turns against you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. Carlton Duty, followed by Brian Gresser.
Mayor Patino, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, I'm a new Santa Maria resident, I moved here on February 1st. Um, I'm from Fresno area, and my last job was at Economic Development Corporation, um, doing a re, a business redevelopment and relocation based on the High-Speed Rail project. All those businesses that got displaced through there, we needed to replace them inside the city of Fresno so we didn't lose them for property tax and for sales tax revenue reasons. I'm empathetic to the plight of the city council on trying to address this issue from a zoning and planning ordinance standpoint, but I'm also a fifth-generation California grower, and I've had up to 600 employees on my payroll at the same time, so my heart goes out to the growers too. I understand that everybody's got a difficult, um, situation here. I'm not here actually to speak on any of that. What I'm here to speak on is the basis of last week's meeting, which comes down to professionalism. As the board and every one of us in this room is aware, Santa Maria is short housing of all types. Last July, um, the Planning Commission took up and approved without dissent Vandenberg Senior Residents' Plan Development on 53 units of low-income senior housing. Ownership has made a commitment to serve some of Santa Maria's most vulnerable, the elderly and the low-income. So when the emergency declaration named Vandenberg Senior Residents came across on the news, it was shocking, shocking. And this was based on a baseless and false rumor, and caused quite a fuss, not only for the Vandenberg residents that were alarmed that they were going to be relocated, and not only for ownership, but for the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County who was equally blindsided. And what's most disturbing about this is how easily this rumor could have been dispatched. And more disconcerting is that no one from council bothered to try, which begs the question, how did this happen? The citizens of Santa Maria deserve professional representation, and discussing emergency moratoriums based on baseless rumor and innuendo does not meet that threshold. I personally know the ownership down there, although I don't speak for them, and I know that they're on-site every day. If you guys want to take up this amendment and fight this thing out, fine, but don't participate in a pattern of torturous business interference for some innocent parties and a bunch of innocent senior citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brian Gresser, followed by Sergio Rivera.
Good evening. My name's Brian Gresser. I am a farm, and, uh, work here in Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County. The H-2A is, uh, necessary for us to keep our farms in business and at the size and working abilities that we're at now. Uh, as we have it right now, we don't have enough people to work on the farms, so with the laws, the laws changing is going to get even worse for us, so we're going to need housing for, to bring in people to work for us. Um, so we need to keep all our options open on our housing and where we can put people to house. Hoping that we can come to a solution without having to go to court. Nobody wants to go to court, but we need to be able to stay in business. Um, and then, Dr. Moats, the question you asked about notifying the neighborhoods, really no good comes out of that other than the bad, as we saw in the Puma. You know, we, nobody wants that. Then, the, the, certain neighbors that don't want to know are the ones that are going to get mad at everybody and come after the housing. Um, you know, somebody moves into the neighborhood, as it is right now, if they're not H-2A, they don't have to announce who they are. You can go buy a house and move wherever you want, doesn't matter who you are, but why is H-2A going to be different? Thank you.
Thank you. Sergio Rivera.
Buenas noches.
Buenos noches.
Bueno, yo vengo aqui a dar mi punto de vista acerca de el programa en el cual ya estoy integrado como cientos de compañeros, que es el H-2A. Simplemente quería dar, dar a conocer que la gente que nos, nos trae contratada aquí son, tratan, los contratistas de, de agarrar o contratar gente de confianza, para, para tratar de aclarar el punto que dio un comentario, un comentario que un señor hace rato, de que no damos, no esperamos confianza. No sé qué es lo que trata de decir con confianza, nosotros simplemente venimos a hacer aquí a trabajar, que es lo mejor que sabemos hacer, nosotros trabajar. No venimos a generar problemas ni mucho menos a la ciudad. En cambio, me gustaría comentar de que no solamente venimos a trabajar, sino, en mi punto, en mi persona, yo estoy tratando de tomar clases para entender el inglés, para hablar el inglés, no simplemente venimos a trabajar, sino también yo quiero venir a superarme. ¿Por qué? Porque me gusta mucho.
No, no, gracias. Excuse the interruption. Uh, so he's here to represent his opinion as an H-2A employee and his experience, and he feels that the contractor that brought him here selected him because he sees he's a trustworthy individual. He wanted to comment on the gentleman that spoke earlier about knowing a neighbor and having someone that he can, he can trust. And he's wondering what that means. He's here to work. In addition to that, he's taking English classes in the evenings.
Otro, otro punto es que venimos a esta, a este país y a esta ciudad es para nosotros generar ingresos económicos, los cuales en nuestro país no nos podríamos tener. Y es por eso que nosotros acudimos a este programa, para poder estar en este país y trabajar, no para generar problemas, solamente queremos trabajar y así generar nosotros nuestro dinero.
We've signed up for this program because it gives us an economic opportunity that does not exist back at home. We came here to work, not to cause problems.
Pues en sí creo que sería todo, mi punto de vista para, a la ciudad, me, me encanta, me encanta la estructura, la, las leyes, las cuales nosotros sabemos desde un principio que tenemos que acatar, y es lo que, lo que hacemos. Nosotros no tenemos ningún problema en la ciudad. Me consta, es mi segundo año que estoy, que estoy en este país, y no he generado yo ni mis compañeros ni un problema en esta ciudad.
We love it here, and we love the city. We appreciate the structure and the laws, and we're here to obey them. I assure you that I, myself, in my second year here, and my coworkers have not caused any problems or broken any laws, and while, while staying here.
Okay, that was the last speaker we have tonight, so it was an hour and 10 minutes. So I'll close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for discussion and/or a motion. Anyone? Dr. Moats?
Okay, I'd like to propose what I think is a reasonable compromise. And in this compromise, I support option B with two changes. Change one is that R2 would be grouped with R3. Change two is that for R1, for seven to 10 persons per unit, that we use conditional use permit. Right now, it's for 11 or more persons. I'd like to reduce that to more than seven. I don't favor a sunset on the R1 properties that are now used for H-2A that haven't caused any problems for anybody. And, uh, I am amenable to using the displacement compensation that we've been talking about. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Wait, you know me?
Go ahead.
Ooh, I broke myself. In reference to some of the speakers, we've got, we've got no voice on what the sale to somebody, that some property owner has. We can't say, well, insist that you sell your house to this person or that person. So, I, that, that's not for us to decide here. Mrs. Allen, who spoke, I, I think she made a, a great deal of sense. Cheryl, who's been speaking at these meetings for a year and a half, I, I, I keep having the feeling that Cheryl has been wronged by people other than H-2A.
No.
You know?
No.
You know? Well, she's, she's saying no if you can't hear her. And, and the, the, the issues that were brought up that I recall were a lot of vehicles...
No, I never said anything about vehicles.
Okay. Okay, well, we, we won't redo that.
It's not sad, but I...
Okay, okay, she didn't say anything about vehicles. Uh, but I, I get these feelings that there's, the one complaint that we now have, and we share, we all share with, is basically the only one we have. We, we don't have any other complaint. Uh, I support most of what Dr. Moats says. We already have a set of rules in place. They wrote them back in the eighties. And, uh, that's when the, the eighties is when the H-2A was first introduced to, to the United States. And it's morphed a couple of times, but, but basically, there is a set of rules already out there. Why do we need a different set of rules? Meaning the fifty, it's 50 square feet per sleeping space, and I'm sure that Mr. Sinco could write excellent ordinance that would say that it's for original construction or permitted construction or something like that. So in other words, you can't just come up and throw pieces of plywood up and say, well, this is a bedroom, and this is a bedroom, and that's a bedroom. I, I think there needs to be reasonable regulations on that. I'm not real big on the displacement issue, I can live with it. I, I don't know that that's a horrendous problem. And if somebody wanted to, I assume they could probably get around it by staying, by leaving the property empty for a period of time or something like that. So I don't, I don't have an issue with that, really, one way or the other.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The displacement issue, if it, if it makes its way into the ordinance, then that's fine with me. I, I just don't, I don't, how many people has this happened to in the, in the last seven years? You know, if it's happened to 1,000 people, then yeah, we have an issue. And perhaps we ought to address it now, before it becomes an issue. So the displacement thing, I'm with Dr. Moats on that. And as Dr. Moats said, option A is out for me. And I would, I would coincide, vote together with Dr. Moats on R2 and 3 being together, and R1 being by itself. I don't think there should be any restrictions on it. I, I stress again that these individuals that come here to do this work are not illegal aliens. They're here on a visa. They have every single right that you, or I, or anyone else has. And I've shied away from saying what I'm going to say now, and I hope I don't start a forest fire. I think we tried this already, about 250 years ago, in this great country. These people, they can live over there, and they can work in our fields, but they can't live over here, certainly not next to us. And now we call it segregation, and prejudice, and things of that nature. And we're still paying for those errors in our ways from the country 250 years ago. So I would favor option B with the same things that Dr. Moats said, but I'd like to add something. And that is, I think that it's worth a consultation with the attorneys that are working with If they're going to charge us $250 or $300 to listen to us for an hour, to see where we are on this, as to whether or not we even want to propose option B. I, I would, I would think that we would be making a bad decision if we end up going down the road where we have to pay the $450,000, or whatever the gentleman quoted out of the, out of the newspaper. So if that's the case, and we get the advice from these attorneys that are representing Guadalupe, then we just don't read it the next time, and it dies on the vine. So I'm very concerned about this court thing. And I said that several times at the last council meeting. We do not want to find ourselves in a courtroom over this. We don't. I had no idea this H2A ad article was going to come out this morning, when it did, but we do not want to go there. We want to settle it in a boardroom, in a conference room. So I would support what Dr. Moats is supporting with the additional suggestion that we make some contact with the attorneys that have a lot more information than perhaps we do.
Dr. Moats, can you, can you go for again, the CUP part for option B, the one that you were tabling?
Sure. Because right now, option B has a ministerial permit for seven to 10 persons per unit, and a conditional use permit for 11 or more persons per unit.
Right.
What I wanted to do is eliminate the ministerial, and just have a conditional use permit for more than seven people.
So lowering the threshold.
Yeah, taking it from 10 down to 11, down to seven.
Why is that?
Well, I still think it's reasonable for people that live in R1 housing to be notified about employee housing coming in next to them. I think people that purchase a house in R1 do so thinking they're getting a single-family residence home. I've got the zoning paper here that finds what the different zones are in the city of Santa Maria. It's...
Oh.
Thank you. It says R1, and underneath R1, what does it say? Madam Mayor, what does it say under R1?
Four to eight dwelling units.
No, no, right, under R1.
Single family.
Okay. So I think R1 should be for single families. Maybe they're large families, and then they'd have more people. But when you buy a single-family home, you're entering into an agreement with the zoning that your city's made, that you're going to be living in a low-density environment. You make that decision, that's your lifestyle choice. And then to have employee housing come in next to you without your knowledge, I think is going to be upsetting for a lot of people. Now, it may not be upsetting for a lot of people, too. And that's why we have a conditional use permit. If somebody applies to have seven or more people in some area of the community, and that's fine with the neighbors, and no one objects, then I think it's fine. They could have 10 people in the house. They could have 20 people in the house. That's fine. But I think if, if it isn't fine with you, you should know that such an event's going to happen, and you should be able to, in some sort of open session, object to it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Moats. Mr. Cordero.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I need to correct myself here. I was aligning myself with the fine man, my colleague, Dr. Moats. I would not be in favor of the CUP at seven. I think that the, I think the ministerial process has merit to it. I think that, I personally would recommend that Mr. Chung, Mr. Ng did it, and just said, well, okay, this meets our criteria. I don't know what we will end up with there, but I would not want to see a CUP process at seven. I just think that...
But, but is it okay for you to have a CU process at 11?
Yeah, I think you're getting up there, yeah.
Well, a lot of people think that 7's getting up there.
I think that that's right. And they've got their opinion, I have mine. And I think that, that most of the houses that we consume under this thing, under this H2A issue, are going to be stuck within that, see, within that number. You know, you're not going to see as many houses, I think, that are going to have 10 and 12 and 15 people. I think most of them will be the R1. I think that most of our community is R1. Is that correct, Mr. Stillman? So I, I think that we should, we should keep it as simple as we can. We should use the rules that are already in place, and not try to write, rewrite new rules. H2A has done a great job of putting, excuse me, the federal government did a great job of putting the rules together and giving us the 50 square feet we can add to it, the, articulate that we want original footprint housing. We're not going to settle for something added on, garages, and such as that, you know.
Right. And I think that that's already included in option B, that the staff have written up. And Dr. Moats, from what I'm hearing, you say, you know, that really concerns me. And the reason why, and from what we saw in the staff's presentation today, is that when we're talking about vulnerable communities, low-income families, low-income families live typically in R2s and R3s. And so by us putting more restrictions in R1s, it's going to push and going to put pressure on those higher-dense communities, therefore theoretically, by displacing more low-income families. So I want you to think about that.
Well, I'm sure there are good arguments, both for and against what I just said. And I'm sure that what you say very well could be true.
Right. And I also want, I mean, a lot of what I heard today is really a symptom of the, of a root problem here. And the root problem here is that we don't have enough housing. And that is something that we are all aware of. And right now, as, you know, as we read in the staff's report, we are trying to come up with a short-term solution to this problem. And we have to be very careful as to how we, how we move forward with this. And so when we're talking about, again, you know, protecting vulnerable communities, we, I just want us to be very mindful that one, one decision can really have a negative impact on another, on, again, in vulnerable, low-income communities. I also want to add that residential zones are meant to house people. Residential zones are meant for housing. Who are we to say who gets to be housed in those residential zones? And why? I keep, I keep hearing people say, we're worried about, we're worried about our safety.
Why do we even have zoning, then? What zoning for?
Well, what I'm saying is that we have zoning for our residential zones are to house people. That's my point. Who are we to say who gets housed in those residential zones? And that's the discussion that we're having here today.
Okay.
I also, I also want to add, you know, as I'm here, listening to the public comments, and seeing our farm workers coming here, and having to make comments such as, "We are not dangerous. We are not a danger to your community." I'm here eating strawberries right now. How is that okay? It's not. And so...
What are you suggesting? I think all of us up here think H2A is a wonderful way to provide labor for our farmers.
And yet, we are adding restrictions after restrictions after restrictions.
No, we're actually opening up all of R2 to H2A workers. I mean, that's a tremendous opening. They don't have any restrictions. It'll be whoever wants to live there.
When we're talking about R1s, though, and I, and I'm happy, I'm, I agree with having R2s and R3s together, and keeping that out of this ordinance. But again, by us imposing more restrictions on option B in R1s, that, that may have very well a negative impact in higher-dense communities.
Well, I think we should hear from the other members of the city council.
Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you. Thank you for that very passionate talk. But in my opinion, I truly believe we're missing the whole boat here. We're not supporting the residents of the city of Santa Maria. And that's who we got elected by, were the residents of the city of Santa Maria, to keep the family structure of neighborhoods, family structure of neighborhoods. Now, I don't know of any other industry that imposes a workforce to be implemented within our communities, as far as being taken from a different country, whatever that country is. We have CND Aerospace, that is huge. They don't implement those workers coming out from another country to come in and work. I want to support our neighborhoods. We talk about R1, R2, R3. I'm for option A. I'm for option A, and I know I'm the only one sitting here agreeing to this, but I'm for option A to protect everybody. If it's not good for R1, it shouldn't be good for R2 or R3. And so, and I will go back to the farmers, I will go back to them being in the county, and since we started this, there has not been one agenda item in front of the supervisors to address this issue. We do have a housing problem issue in here, but I want to protect the residents of the city of Santa Maria. We talk about good-faith displacement. There should be more concern on the families that are being displaced, instead of satisfying the business owners' needs. We have, I can't imagine taking a family of children, displacing them for farmworker housing. Santa Maria is not built that way. So we need to take into consideration how we are going to protect those families with the children that are in them. We talk about passion, we talk about everything, but we don't talk about the residents of the city of Santa Maria that have made their biggest investment in their entire life, and they want to have a good return on their money. And I get, I get the issue of the farmers, but listen, you guys had this coming down for years and years and years, and never tried the county part. Then we do get someone in the county that decides it's not cost-effective to them, so we'll put it within the residents of the city of Santa Maria, which, you know what, is not cost-effective to the neighborhoods, neighbors that have to live there. So there's, there's, this isn't a one-way street, it's a two-way street, where we have to decide what we're going to do. And I think the strongest restrictions for option A is to make sure that our farmers understand that the city of San Maria is in business in regards to protecting the residents. And I don't mean protecting from evilness, I mean protecting them from their investment, is what I'm talking about. And so I'm an option A person, and I know I probably stand alone, but I stand up for the residents of the city of Santa Maria. Farmers, you can, you know that you have the option of building in the county, anywhere you want to go. There was a project that was there, and they declined it. So that's where I stand.
And...
Ms. River, go ahead. And I agree with Councilmember Waterfield, in the sense that we have to protect Santa Maria residents, absolutely. But not just those who have the means to invest in money, not, I'm sorry, not just the ones who have the means to invest in purchasing homes. I think that our job is to protect all Santa Maria residents, even those who are here working or living here for 10 months out of the year, which is a long time, most of the year. And again, if we want to protect Santa Maria residents, that's why I'm also in favor of adding or directing staff to look into tenant displacement assistance, and how, assistance, and how we can incorporate that into this ordinance. Again, it's not just about protecting Santa Maria residents who have the means to invest, but all Santa Maria residents, even those who do not. Those who are the most vulnerable, those who are low-income, and again, by us putting more restrictions, or adding more, yeah, adding more restrictions or more barriers to the, to growers, and, and, as they're going through these, this, this process, I think that it may have a negative impact on R2s, R3s, which will impact low-income families.
Your turn, Mayor.
Yeah, my turn. I, I lean towards option A. I think that R1s, and I'm not talking about who gets housed in them, I'm talking about the kind of housing that we build. We're talking about zoning. And I think that it's very important, when you have a single-family home, that it stays a single-family home. I think that's extremely important. And I say again, we're not talking about who we house there, it's taught, I'm talking about zoning. I would be in favor of a CUP for R1s. R2s and R3s, and this may or may not have an effect, everything's going to have an effect on what we do, to have that ministerial. So I don't have a problem with that. But at the same time, I realize this is short-term, as Mr. Ng said, we have to be, we, this council needs to be talking to the county. They have a responsibility. We have a housing shortage in Santa Maria, and I think some of these homes need to be built out in the county that we need to address.
I completely hear that, and so I'm also really mindful of our smaller, small growers, the mom-and-pop growers, who don't have the means to house workers outside of the city limits. When we're talking about small business owners, and we, this is going to hurt, this may hurt their bottom line, if we completely ban H2A from, from Santa Maria. But going back to, again, I agree, separating R2s and R3s from this ordinance, I'm in favor of that. I would also like to see the city staff move forward with looking into a tenant displacement assistance, tenant displacement assistance. And I would also, would like to see, again, one of the questions was, who would, who would authorize, or who, the questions that you asked. would authorize or who, the questions that you asked, you asked, um, who would be the body, the body who would authorize this premise? Um, I agree with Councilmember Cordero and Dr. Moats that it should be the zoning administrator. Um, and, you know, I would also like to request, um, that we look into lowering the radius in which neighbors would need to get notified, going, lowering it from 300 feet to 200 feet, if it's not possible?
Um, Mayor Patino, councilmembers, that's state law, so if you require a discretionary permit, then the minimum is 300 feet.
So the minimum is 300 feet, so...
Yeah. Okay. So, back to square one. So, let's take the, um, employee housing location, where such facilities may be established. So I think we need a consensus. Are we willing to establish it, um, in R2 and R3 and not R1? I don't, I want a consensus.
Repeat that, please.
Okay. So are we willing to say that H2A, or I would not say H2A, employee housing be established in R2 and R3s, but not in R1s?
That is, R2 and R3 without any restrictions put on by the, by the city government?
I didn't say that.
Okay.
I didn't say that.
So you're talking about removing employee housing from residential districts altogether?
No. I'm removing it just from R1, but placing it in R2 and R3.
That's number one, and number two will go to...
Number two, what kind of permitting would be appropriate?
I'm sorry, are you excluding H2A housing from R1 completely?
Yes, that was, well, what I'm saying is, where are we going to place these facilities? Okay?
We don't, I don't think we have any place.
I, I have a question, too.
Go ahead.
Mr. Filcinko. What, what, how well would our case stand before a judge if we were to do that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Soto, members of the city council, I believe that, I mean, I can't predict what a court would do, of course, but there, there is an argument to be made that the council has the authority to ban employee housing of seven or more in R1 or any residential zone, depending on the findings you make. And that, that's based on law that comes from residential care facilities that are located in residential zones. The state law says that six or less for residential care can locate in a residential neighborhood, but cities and counties have the authority to regulate seven or more as businesses and couldn't ban them from residential zones. So the same would apply to employee housing, in my opinion.
To, to be frank, um, saying that we can only house, I mean, I, I, I just really worry about protecting, I, I want us to be, that we protect the City of Santa Maria. I don't want us to become another Guadalupe and, and go through something like that. And so, um, I do not agree with banning employee housing in R1s.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
I think that that takes you back to what I said earlier. The set of rules is already in place. The rules are there. The federal government has it written down in H2A that you need X number of square feet of sleeping space for each individual. We can add to that some creative writing with regard to, uh, original footprint of the house or whatever, so that, so that we can prevent from somebody having a big, I've got a room in my house that, it's, they sometimes call it a great room. I can run two or three pieces of plywood in there and say, "Well, this is a bedroom." Yeah, I, I think we should prevent that kind of stuff, and we, we have to be able to prevent that kind of stuff.
Okay, so are you saying that employee housing then can go into any zone?
Any zone, yeah. And I think that, and it's going to go out of the zones. I don't see employee housing being here forever. I mean, I think that it's going to go out, and then, and when it does...
Well, I'm trying to get a consensus of how everybody knows.
Madam Mayor, yeah, Madam Mayor, I think that we're looking at option A and option B, which covers what we're, what you're trying to get, what you're trying to get at. So option A would require conditional use permit approved by the zoning administrator for employee housing, facilities for seven or more persons per unit. The zoning administrator hearing process would be discretionary and would require notification of neighbors within a 300-foot radius. Option B was propose a ministerial over-the-counter permit process for employee housing of seven to 10 persons per unit, no public notice, and a zoning administrator, conditional use permit for facilities to houses 11 or more employees per unit. I'm in favor of option A.
Okay. Well, okay, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm hearing different things up here besides option A and option B. So I'm trying to figure out where...
But where we put it would be...
Where do you want to go with, with the zoning?
Anna, can I just ask a question?
Dr. Moats.
So you're in favor for R1 property of adding a conditional use permit for more than seven people? Because that's in option A, and you just read it.
Yeah.
Was that seven, or, sorry?
Seven, more, seven or more.
Yeah.
Well, that's, we, we have, yeah, for seven or more.
So you're in favor of that?
It's a condition, yeah.
Okay, Anna, I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
Are, are you in favor of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so there's three of us that are in favor. And we have, and we have, do we have the three of us in favor of...
That's for the CUP.
...of taking, uh, R2 and mixing it together with R3, so it's all one, and, and that's Wild West, anybody can go in there, no restrictions from the city?
You know, that's, that's where it just, it just really bothers me because, and I've, I've said this to staff before, if it's, if it's, if it's not good, if it's, you know, if you can't have it in R1, why, why do we throw it in R2 and R3? But I know I can't demolish all of it. I know I can't. All I, all I know is that we can put restrictions on everything, on R1, R2, and R3. But I don't think I'm going to be able to get a three vote on that at all whatsoever. So what you're saying is...
So we're getting into the City of Guadalupe syndrome. I mean, they lost that lawsuit because they tried to restrict H2A and R3. I mean, we're not even considering doing anything like that, so...
But we're not restricting, we're just, you know, we are just putting higher requirements to...
That equals to restrict these.
Well, no, because it's, you, do you even go in front of a CUP and whether the people, I want to give the people, the residents of Santa Maria, that choice. The farmers that spoke here do not want to give the citizens of, of Santa Maria that choice, they just want to plant them there. And so that's not what residential neighborhoods were for. It's not, we're making a workforce neighborhood, but to bring it back to you and to get half of what I want, yes.
Yeah, I think we can make a compromise.
So the compromise being having this ordinance, having this, having this ordinance and taking out R2s from this, I mean, I think what I heard you say earlier was that you were in favor of option B.
I'm in favor of option B with two modifications.
Which would make it option A.
Well, part of it would be option A, and part of it would be liberalizing, uh, who can go into R2. So, you know, it's kind of a compromise. We're allowing more, uh, farm labor worker to go into R2 while perhaps restricting some of them from going into R1. But I, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
And adding the tenant displacement assistance?
And adding the tenant displacement assistance.
I don't have any problems with adding a tenant displacement assistance. I just think adding the CUP at seven is, is going to create unnecessary hurdles.
And with the ministerial process, um, I, I think that with, with having that in place, it, it's already going to be on the city's radar. We're going to know exactly where workers are going to be housed, we're going to, um, there's going to be, um, requirements of them that they have to follow. The only difference between the ministerial and the zoning administrator is the fact that they would have to have a public hearing.
There's another difference. The difference is noticing.
And then, and...
Because ministerial doesn't require noticing. Now, if, if we could do ministerial and noticing, I would be for that. In fact, I discussed that with some, a lot of people, and, and they were okay with that. But you can't do that.
Are you, are you talking about the difference between the ministerial and the conditional use permit then?
Yeah.
Right, right, that the difference would be the public hearing and then, of course, also the notification. But I think we are also, um, my, the way that I see it, is by even just having the ministerial, um, process, we, we, we will, we will, again, there will be requirements that the growers would need to follow as well as, as well as the workers. And so, but at the end, you know, I would really like to see us looking into a tenant displacement assistance and directing staff to, to, so that they can do further research and find a way that we can implement that, because I really don't want to see families displaced, and I think that that's something that we, we can agree on.
And I agree with that completely.
Okay, can you repeat?
Do you want me to make a motion?
But before you do that, I want, I want to ask Mr. Eng something. Okay, so the option A that would require conditional proof, permit approval by the zoning administrator, that would still go in front of the planning commission, is that correct?
It is its own type of hearing, so the...
Its own type of hearing.
The zoning administrator would be the decision-making body.
Right, that's what I thought. So what, what kind of setting would that be? Describe that to me.
Uh, it could be in a room and, uh, also keeping, it's, when notices go out, if, if no comments are received, it, it could be a fairly automatic type of decision. But if comments are received, then there's an obligation to have a hearing process and hear the comments and make a decision based on the input received and based on the comments provided.
Now, you, you make comments plural, even if one comment is received.
Then there'll be a hearing.
It's your, it's your council members, I intend to interrupt, that's just what I asked you to do.
No, the, no, the, I'm sorry, the here, the public hearing has been closed. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
That's it. We want to take our little families, your little properties.
Mr. Mendoza, the, there's no public comment now.
That's it, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, just to summarize things for the 15th time, I, I think, you know, the benefits to the, to the growers and shippers would be that they now get R2 without having ministerial or a CUP, that we're eliminating the sunset clause on the R1 properties that are already in use, and I think those are good things. On the other hand, part of the compromise is they have to get a conditional use permit for R1, which I think is reasonable. So, Madam Mayor, I'm going to make a motion.
Wait, before you make the motion, can you repeat the sunset clause? I just want to make sure that I understood what you said.
Well, you know, there's a sunset clause right now that, uh, well, first of all, it's said all R1 disappears from R1, or all H2A disappears from R1 in 18 months.
In 18 months.
That's the sunset clause.
And, right, but...
And I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, so you're in favor of option B?
I'm in favor of most of option B, except for conditional use permit on R1.
Option B with a conditional use permit for seven or more.
Yep, seven, yeah, or seven or more, right.
Seven or more.
Yeah. So that way everybody can walk out if you're angry at something.
Okay.
So read, read, I need to understand what the motion is again. With the, are we keeping the sunset clause in?
No.
No.
I'm in favor of keeping the sunset clause in.
I am also in favor of keeping a sunset clause in. But go ahead, go ahead and read that, and let's see what the consensus, we're going to compromise.
Okay.
I already did.
Okay, so, here, here's the motion.
Okay.
Um, we accept option B with the following amendments. Um, we will, we will take R2 and combine it with R3 for the purpose of municipal review, number one. Number two, um, we will take seven persons or greater in R1 goes to a conditional use permit, and, that's all?
Displacement.
And, uh, do I have to say that?
No, you don't have to say it.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about the sunset. Can we do that in a second?
No, he meant the tenant displacement assistance that you were talking about.
Displacement.
Oh, yes, and, and that we direct staff to come up with some reasonable displacement compensation for people that, that lose their domicile for H2A, and for maybe three, the suggest, I won't even suggest what it'll be, let staff work it out.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Or, option B, taking out R2s.
R2s and 3s.
Okay.
Okay? For municipal review, and R, um, in option A, the R, R, I mean, seven or greater in R1?
Right.
Goes to a CUP, right?
The CUP greater than seven in R1.
And then displacement.
And displacement.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm in favor of the sunset clause, but I, may there only be two of us here?
So, I second, I second Dr. Moats.
I'm not in favor of the sunset clause.
No, well, it's not part of the motion that Dr. Moats made.
We're going to do that out.
Okay.
But I don't, okay.
Okay, so would you like to make a, you want to make that motion, then?
Yeah, I make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Can you second the motion, would you? I hate to do this, but this is going to be a fun minutes to read. But would you state your motion?
Okay, again, that we accept option B with the following amendments. One, R2 will be considered along with R3. Two, in R1, seven persons or greater will be subject to a conditional use permit and not a ministerial permit. And three, that we give consideration to having staff come up with a reimbursement for those persons who are going to be displaced by H2A.
I hear your motion, and I think that it will create an insurmountable, an insurmountable hurdle to get beyond the seven.
And you should know.
You know, I just think that it's going to be very difficult, and that we will be back here revisiting it.
And, and we can, and we can...
We may be back revisiting this, Mr. Cordero, anyway, so...
Right. Do we, can we also give a timeframe of when we can revisit this issue?
Oh, we can come back in a year and revisit. Is that good?
Come back anytime we want.
Well, we can come back anytime we want, actually.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a suggestion. I, I would look forward to the results of the motion, but I would recommend that whatever the motion, whatever the result is, if there's a consensus, if there's three votes to move forward with that, that you direct staff to come back with an ordinance that is written to reflect your direction and that will incorporate some of the findings to support your action from the evidence in the record tonight and from the previous hearings.
Okay.
So we won't be, we won't be doing the first reading tonight, just to clarify, the first reading will, when it comes back to you.
It'll come back to us.
But we don't have to, we wouldn't have to open up the, the public hearing again if, because we're, we've, we've done that, and we'll just continue it to have you adopt the, the ordinance that you're approving right now, as written with, with the findings that are incorporated from the record.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Sorry. I just want to make sure I understood again. Go. Sorry.
So that they will incorporate everything we've been saying tonight in the motion, they will, our staff will come back at the next meeting and put together an ordinance that includes what we've spoken about tonight.
So right now, the motion is strictly to direct staff to create this ordinance with the amendments that Dr. Moats...
That is correct.
So Dr. Moats' motion that we're, we're being...
Yes, yes, and then we have a second. Any further discussion? Any further questions?
Well...
You wanted option three?
I wanted, no, I think that it's, I still believe that we'll end up...
Okay.
...elsewhere.
And you could be right, and we'll come back and we can revisit that.
Right. I, I think we'll be back.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Councilmember Cordaro?
Oh, yeah.
Is that it?
I'll go with the aye.
Okay. Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
And Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Okay. A report by City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next meeting of the City Council is May 7.
We can probably wait till everyone leaves.
Nothing wrong with that, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Can I have it quiet in the chambers, please?
The next meeting of the City Council is May 7, and we have a proclamation for Go Rodeo Day, so we want to remind you to wear your western wear. And the main item on the May 7 meeting is the CDVG Action Plan Review for the 2019/2020 And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cordaro, we'll start with you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 3, I attended the strawberry recognition dinner out at the fairgrounds. It was, again, once again, very well done. The mariachi music brings a certain elevation to the excitement there for this. On the 5th, I attended some political training in Buellton, some of which was displayed here tonight. On the 6th, I was at the Elks Queen Kickoff, which is a great event to attend. On the 6th and 7th, I sat with the special meeting with all the council members on interviews for the city attorney. And on the 12th, I went to see the poet. His name is Juan Felipe Herrera at the high school Ethel Pope gym, and it was absolutely fantastic. This gentleman had a whole different way of bringing the group together. He involved the audience to a great degree. It was just really a great program. It was about 96, 97% in English and just a very little bit in Spanish, but he just did such a good job of creating a very humorous moment, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on your behalf at that meeting. And it was put on by Allen Hancock College, but it was a great addition to the culture of Santa Maria. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 3, I did the Ben Hayes Show. I'm getting used to that now.
Are you more likely?
Well, Anna showed me how to do it.
What time do you do that in the morning?
It'll be 7:30 tomorrow.
7:30, okay. Tune in 7:30 tomorrow morning.
Okay. On the 6th and 7th, I was present at the interviews for the city attorney. And on the 11th, I was a celebrity waiter at the Calm Event at the Radisson.
How was the Calm Event?
Oh, it wasn't very calm. Ladies shout for calm. They made a lot of noise, raised a lot of money.
Good, good. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. On April 3, I met with Toe Plow and another gentleman from Exxon, had a good meeting with them. April 4, LAVCO Board Meeting, very interesting. We're going to hear more about what's coming down on LAVCO, and I will brief the council at a later time. April 6 and 7, I was with the rest of my colleagues with the city attorney. And then the whole week last week, which was... I had a great opportunity to go to Arizona and be part of this event called Country Thunder. Country Thunder is like Stagecoach in India. You're out in the middle of the desert, and you turn this entire place into a city. And we probably had 75, at least 75,000 people in this one place for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they bring in top-notch entertainers. And of course, I was looking at it as a smaller, much, much smaller venue for Santa Maria for something for the Santa Maria Police Council as a fundraiser to do something like that. So, I went over there to see what was going on and how they constructed command centers with sheriff. And Glendale had lend them their command center as well. There was just... There were a lot of public safety personnel there, but everything was smooth. Everything went smooth, and they had 27,000 campsites, and they had to add more. And you had anywhere from million-dollar motorhomes to people sleeping in tents. So, it was just one big festival, and I'm glad I got to watch it during the day. I didn't stay for the night events at all whatsoever. So, that was good. So, coming soon to Santa Maria, maybe in a smaller version.
We'll plan on that. That sounds great. Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 3, I attended the annual strawberry dinner. On April 5, I attended the Santa Barbara County Steering Committee Census Count. Interesting stuff, learning about the census. April 6, Elks Rodeo Queen Kickoff Dinner. First time attending that. Very cool.
You did. Why are you enjoying yourself?
Oh, I did, I did. April 10, I attended the Eno's Community Input Meeting regard... Oh, it was the Eno's Parking Cultural Center Community Input Meeting. April 11, the Community Input Meeting for the sports/soccer complex. April 12, the Juan Felipe Herrera Allen Hancock College Event that was at Ethel Pope. On Sunday, April 14, I attended the Cause Action Fund Awards Reception where Senator Hannah Beth Jackson was recognized, and the event was emceed by Assemblywoman Monique Limone. And today, I went to Junior High... I mean, to Fessler Junior High, where I spoke to a leadership class. And it's actually my second time going. And they created... I... These fun artsy and some not-so artsy ideas of what they want their city to be more like. They want more educational opportunities, safer crossing paths, bike lanes, pedestrian lanes. They love their police officers. The Santa Maria PD station is around on here. They want cheaper housing and free therapy, so more parks and open space. So, I brought these with us so that if you all are interested, we can take a peek.
Okay. April 3, I attended the Pinwheel Planting and Child Abuse Awareness Proclamation Presentation. And Ms. Soto was there. At noon, I took a group from Pioneer High School. We went, did a tour of the police department, and that was preceded by lunch at Chick-fil-A. That's where the kids wanted to go. On April 4, met with Toe Plow and David Ly from the Exxon Mobil. Later that day, I met with Tim Mahoney from Southern Cowell Gas Company, did a site tour of Hotel Santa Maria. April 5, downtown Fridays. April 6, attended the Elks Queen Kickoff at the Santa Maria Elks Lodge. And April 10, Day of Hope fundraiser, the corner of Cook and Broadway. They raised $225,000 that day, and I think they're expecting more monies to come in. Attended the groundbreaking for the Sierra Madre cottages. Yeah, and Mr. Cordaro was there. They're building 40 units of senior housing, which is much needed in the city. Went to Pioneer Valley High School for my teen advisory committee. And that evening, attended the Parks Recreation and Parks Community Meeting on Veterans Memorial Center, on the cultural center. April 11, I spoke at the Women's Council Realtors at the Radisson. And thank you very much for filling in for me at the poet laureate.
Well, actually, I was filling in for Dr. Moats because he couldn't fill in for you.
That's right.
Sorry.
And so, my grandsons were at Cal Poly, and they both did great. One on the 12th and the other on the 13th on team roping. And the morning of the 13th, I spoke to U.S. Marine High School recruits, which was interesting because you don't know what you're going to tell these young kids or what they're going to ask you. On the 14th, I attended the qualifications for the mini rodeo out here at the Menetti Arena and then went over to the Family Kite Festival. It's really interesting when you can see these, this... I don't know if it was a parent or a grandparent trying to get a kite up in the sky, and I'm yelling out how to do it. And of course, he can't hear me. He's down there. But I guess after I left, Mr. Stillwell said he finally got the kite up. He just had to be running and holding the kite up in the air, and there was enough wind to do it. And on the 15th, meeting at Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, and then I spoke at the Rancho Buena Vista Homeowners Association Meeting, and that was it. Anything else from the dais?
I...
Yes?
Sorry. I would like to make one point before we wrap up. Can we make sure that we have Spanish interpreters at every meeting from now on? I just don't want us to ever be cut off guard again with having to ask someone from the audience to interpret. That is frankly embarrassing and not acceptable.
Well, we usually do, and the rule is that they make a request because we've had interpreters here for like maybe four or five consecutive meetings and never have used them and have to pay for them. But in the future, you know, we did have two Spanish-speaking people at the podium tonight. So, we'll just sort of get tuned into that a little bit better, yeah. Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned.